If I can get everyone to work their way to their seats, we will be getting started here in less than a minute. I call this meeting to order. Welcome to our council meeting for June 10th, 2025. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker will be permitted three minutes to address the council. Thank you for participating in your city government. Tonight's invocation will be given by Police Chaplain Michael Sacks. Please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude for the city, for its leaders, and for the sacred trust placed in all who serve this community. As we gather for the city council meeting, may we acknowledge your sovereignty and seek your guidance in all that is discussed and decided here tonight. Lord, we especially lift up Chief John Grasik, who is being appointed to serve as the Chief of Police for the City of Clermont. We thank you for calling leaders such as him into positions of great responsibility and influence. Grant him wisdom like that of Solomon, who prayed in Kings 3:9. So give your servant a discerning heart to govern your people and to distinguish between right and wrong. May Chief Grasik lead with integrity, humility, and strength. Surround him with wise counsel and steadfast support. Let his tenure be marked by justice, compassion, and the kind of courage that brings peace to those he has sworn to protect. Lord, we also pray for the members of this council. May they serve with vision and unity, always mindful of the public trust and the weight of every decision, as is written in Proverbs 11:14. Where there is no guidance, a people falls; but in abundance of counselors, there is safety. Bless this meeting, oh God. Let truth and transparency prevail, and let every voice be heard with respect. May your presence be felt in this room, and may your will be done in this city. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Wow. Next, the City Clerk Hall will administer the oath of office to Police Chief Grasik. What a day. Please. Is the family coming?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Say aye and state your name.
Aye, John Grasik.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Protect and defend?
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government?
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida?
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office?
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state?
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will?
That I will.
Well and faithfully perform?
Well and faithfully perform.
The duties of?
The duties of?
Chief of Police?
Chief of Police.
Of the Clermont Police Department?
Of the Clermont Police Department.
For which I am now about to enter.
For which now I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
I promise I will keep it short. That that oath doesn't get any easier the more you say it. It actually becomes more impactful the higher you go up. So with that, I'll just say a few words. I am truly honored and humbled to step into this role within the Clermont Police Department. Today is not just about me, it is about all of us in this room. This achievement is not the result, or is a result, of a collective effort, and I could not have reached this point alone. I would like to take a moment to recognize three very special groups of people who have made this possible. First, I want to thank my family for their unwavering support and the sacrifices they have made along the way. Without their encouragement, I would not be standing here today. Second, I am deeply grateful to my City of Clermont family. For the past 20 years, you have mentored and supported me, helping me grow both personally and professionally. And then finally, but certainly not least, I want to express my sincere appreciation to the men and women of the Clermont Police Department. Your dedication and passion for serving our community and protecting our community are truly unmatched. I am excited for the future and look forward to what we will accomplish together. And thank you, City Council, City Manager, Deputy City Manager, for this opportunity. Thank you.
Yes. Congratulations to you, to you and your family. I know that you're going to continue serving our beautiful city with the integrity and the excellence that you show each and every day, as well as these fine men and women that you lead. And we are honored to have you in this position. Many blessings to you and your family.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Chief Grasik. I'm gonna just say congratulations, thank you, because I'll probably get very sentimental as I've made on several occasions that we've been working together for a long time, long before I was the mayor. When I first got busy in this city, you know, two or three years into the duty office here, we started working together. And we did some things out there together that, you know, I'm very proud of. And the City of Clermont is where it's at today because of the work of you and where is your partner. I think I saw Mr. Sayers back there and everything. We worked quite well together back around 2008, 2009 timeframe. So congratulations and well deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I just want to thank you very much. I've just known you for a short period of time, but through that period of time, I've seen your effectiveness as we, as we look around the country today, what's going on, and we look at the City of Clermont, how peaceful it is, how it's a place where everyone kind of gets along. And I think we owe that all to you and your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Yes. Anyone else? And you know, and I'm gonna say this, as I look back at the room and look at all these officers here, that is a great testament of your leadership over the last few years as Deputy Chief as well. So I thank you for all that again. I've been all that. Congratulations. So. We're gonna move on. We get, today we have two presentations. The first presentation will be the Police Department Awards and Check Presentation by the Police Chief Grasik. What a sounds good.
Good afternoon, Council, City Manager. Super excited today to highlight our personnel. First, I'm going to highlight the newly promoted Deputy Chief Michael McMaster. We'll be reading all of the awards as I hand out the awards to the recipients. So Deputy Chief McMaster will come up.
Thank you. If I can get Susanna Ray to come up? Officer Susanna Ray is the 2024 Recipient of the Year Award of the Clermont Police Department. Officer Ray has been employed by the Clermont Police Department since 2018. Over the past year, Officer Ray has demonstrated exemplary service, unwavering dedication, and a profound commitment to the values and missions of our department. Officer Ray continuously goes above and beyond within the agency as well as within the community by ensuring she provides exceptional investigative services to the citizens of the community she serves. Officer Ray has received numerous commendations during the 2024 County Year for her commitment to the citizens of Clermont by continuously displaying the agency's core values of courage, honor, integrity, professionalism, and service above self. Officer Ray handled predominantly all of the child abuse, sex crimes, and domestic bonds calls of the service, excuse me, calls for service investigations of the Alpha Squad of our Uniformed Services Division. Officer Ray dedicates countless hours, days, and at times weeks to her investigations, ensuring that no stone is left unturned. Some of the highlights of her 2024 cases that she investigated. She handled an armed kidnapping and sexual battery case. It ended in arrest along with a DNA search warrant and a vehicle search warrant. In December of 2023, she took the lead on an armed robbery of a gas station and ultimately submitted the arrest warrant in March of 2024, which included a vehicle search warrant and a vehicle data historical search warrant, which is a new search warrant that shows where a vehicle has been by the use of cellphone towers. Culminating in the arrest of the individual, she also had a Luden Civius molestation case, which included a residential search warrant and ended in arrest. A sexual battery case involving a local acupuncture doctor, doctor she partnered with investigations for search warrants and ultimately in arrest. Officer Ray is always respectful and maintains a positive attitude even on difficult calls or with difficult subjects. Again, Officer Susanna Ray, the 2024 recipient, Officer of the Year for the Clermont Police Department. Congratulations. Sergeant Dennis Hall is the recipient of the 2024 Supervisor of the Year Award for the Clermont Police Department. Sergeant Hall has been a member of the Clermont Police Department since 2010 and was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in 2019. Sergeant Hall's exceptional leadership, dedication, and hands-on approach have significantly enhanced the performance and effectiveness of the Crime Suppression Unit, our CSU team. Over his career, Sergeant Hall has demonstrated leadership, dedication, and commitment to a subordinates of the agency and the community as a whole. Sergeant Hall is a hands-on leader who consistently provides guidance and support to CSU members and collaborates effectively with outside agencies. His proactive leadership ensures operational excellence and fosters a cultural teamwork and professionalism. Sergeant Hall's reputation and expertise has allowed him the unit, has allowed the unit to actively participate in numerous inter-agency initiatives, to include narcotics and gang intelligence briefings, search warrants, undercover narcotics operations, and sex trafficking operation. Sergeant Hall works collaboratively with the members of his unit, assisting with narcotics arrests, undercover surveillance, vehicle and person tailing, and tactical planning. His involvement ensures the safety and success of each of these operations. A few of the 2024 highlights for our Crime Suppression Unit. This unit made up of five individuals had 126 felony arrests, 76 misdemeanor arrests, 60 warrant arrests. They seized approximately 145 grams of cocaine, 40 grams of fentanyl, 229 grams of methamphetamines, 94 grams of stimulants, and 163 units of pills. They served two search warrants, and they recovered numerous stolen vehicles that ultimately led to the arrests. Sergeant Hall is deeply committed to the professional growth of the members of the Crime Suppression Unit. He seeks training for the members of the unit and passes along his knowledge in key areas such as working with confidential informants, execution of search warrants, and conducting successful undercover operations. Sergeant Hall goes above and beyond to support the Crime Suppression Unit. His leadership and dedication, along with his ability to mentor officers, foster collaboration, and achieve operational excellence makes him the ideal recipient of the 2024 Supervisor of the Year for the Clermont Police Department. Congratulations. All right. So the next one is a Medal of Valor. So if I can have these gentlemen come forward. Sergeant Dennis Hall. Corporal Jimmy Carper. Corporal Jeremy Gustafson. Corporal Alex Aponte. K-9 Officer Kevin Guy and Officer Anthony Burgos. They are all being awarded the Medal of Valor for the extraordinary bravery and unwavering courage that they showed. Medal of Valor is awarded to police officers that have showed exceptional bravery at imminent risk of serious bodily injury or for exceptional courage for performing a voluntary act in an extremely dangerous situation. This commendation is to formally recognize these six gentlemen for their extraordinary bravery and their unwavering courage while performing their duties in an extremely dangerous situation. Their actions exemplify the highest standards of dedication, professionalism, and service above self. On February 5th of this year, at approximately 3:40 PM, these gentlemen demonstrated exceptional fortitude during a call for service. The call involved a resident who reported seeing an adult female screaming and being chased by someone. These officers responded to carton wood apartments where they discovered blood on the front door, a bullet hole in the front door, and a deceased female, adult female behind it. The door was slightly jarred. These officers developed an entry plan and began to methodically clear the apartment. While clearing the residence, they encountered a locked door. The locked door was forcefully opened, at which time the adult male suspect fired multiple rounds at these gentlemen. One officer returned fire at the suspect. By doing so, he provided cover for other personnel to withdraw from the apartment. Despite the considerable risks involved, they acted decisively and with remarkable composure to ensure the safety and well-being of others. In this perilous situation, these officers displayed qualities that go above and beyond the call of duty. Their ability to remain calm under pressure, assess the situation with clarity, and take swift action is a testament to their character and training. It is worth noting that their actions not only safeguarded others, but also inspired confidence and courage in those around them. The courage exhibited by these officers serves as an inspiration to all who work alongside them. Their commitment to their duties, even in the face of grave danger, reflects their deep sense of responsibility and dedication to service. It's individuals like these who remind us of the profound impact we can have during moments of crisis. Again, we extend our deepest gratitude and admiration and thanks to Sergeant Dennis Hall, Corporal Jimmy Harper, Corporal Jeremy Gustafson, Corporal Alex Aponte, K-9 Officer Kevin Guy, and Officer Anthony Burgos. Thank you, gentlemen.
And I promise we're done after this one with the check presentation. At this time, if I could have Detective Aaron Clark come up?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Last year in February, we were privileged to have our fifth annual Honoring the Fallen 5K. Today, we have a check presentation for the funds that we were able to raise. We're really thankful for our community, for them showing up, and also our community partners that partnered with us. It allows us to, we gave almost, or over 80% of our race entry fees, we'll go directly to these two nonprofits. And I have a video here. We can play the video and then I'll, we'll have a couple, somebody else come up just to talk about where that money is going.
Your presence here today is a testament to the love and the respect we hold for our fallen heroes who devoted their lives to serving our community with courage and integrity. While racing up your sneakers today, hitting the pavement, we are not just participants in a race. We are here in a united purpose, and that purpose is to support our fallen heroes. Each step we take today is a tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. It is our privilege to stand together to remember and celebrate their lives and legacies. If they'd let us reflect as we honor those who have laid down their lives for the safety and well-being of our community. To all of you who have come out to run, volunteer our support in today's 5K, I again say thank you. Your presence embodies the spirit of community, and the remembrance and your support ensures that our fallen heroes' sacrifices will continue to be recognized and celebrated.
The fifth annual Honoring the Fallen 5K event was a resounding success, selling out with over 620 enthusiastic participants. This year's event continued its trend of surpassing previous years, demonstrating its growing popularity and community support. A heartfelt thanks goes out to the many generous business sponsors whose contributions have made it possible for over 80% of the funds raised to benefit two deserving charities. Their support is instrumental in making a positive impact in the community, and we are grateful for their partnership in this endeavor. We especially want to thank Orlando Health, South Lake Hospital, Central Florida Behavioral Hospital, and 1-800-BORDOM. It is crucial to emphasize the importance of supporting our law enforcement and their survivors during events like this. Law enforcement officers dedicate their lives to protecting and serving our communities, often putting themselves in harm's way. The families of these brave individuals also bear the weight of this commitment, and it is our duty to stand by them. By participating in events that raise funds for these charities, we not only honor the sacrifices made by law enforcement, but also provide vital resources and support to their survivors. Together, we can foster a community that truly values and appreciates the efforts of those who keep us safe.
So this year, we raised nearly $20,000.
Wow.
We actually raised over that, but that's exactly the amount that we'll be splitting, it's like $19,000 and some change, between two nonprofits. The first is Code Four Initiative, which is right here in Clermont, but we are here to take care of law enforcement officers in the state of Florida who not only, maybe we can help with an in the line of duty death for a family, but we're also there to help with catastrophic injuries or unforeseen financial stress that can come on based on the job. So we do have, we have that here. And then the other nonprofit is Concerns of Police Survivors, and I'll invite Bria Barry up here to speak on what they do. Race is really important because it's not just, it's the community coming together, but it's survivors of these people that have lost loved ones, seeing that we haven't forgotten, you know, their loved ones, so.
Detective Clark.
Yes, sir.
How many different agencies we have represented this year?
We have quite a few. We actually, so we give out an award for the most well-represented agency. A lot of the times, we don't even know, but for some reason, Chicago seems to be one of the best represented ones, even though we have a pretty big NYPD retirement community here, so. But I would say probably over 20 different agencies, so.
Good. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I promise I won't be before you long. I practiced this. I read it. It's not even a minute and a half. Good evening, Commissioners and community members. My name is Bria Barry, and I currently serve as the President of Central Florida Concerns of Police Survivors. But most importantly to me, I am the surviving spouse of Master Deputy Richard Berry, Lake County Sheriff's Office, in the watch July 16th, 2020. And today I have with me our trustee from our board and members of our surviving families, Officer Kevin Valencia, OPD, and my sister, of course, she's here for my husband. And on behalf of Central Florida cops, I want to sincerely thank the Clermont Police Department for their outstanding organization, smooth execution, and generous donation to our cause. Cops is dedicated to supporting the families and coworkers of law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Our mission is to rebuild the shattered lives through peer support, counseling, and programs that help survivors heal and move forward. Thanks to the dedication and generosity of the Clermont PD, we're able to continue that mission and remind survivors that they are not alone. Your department's support means everything. Support of this nature assisted our chaplain in sending nine first-year families to Washington DC last month to honor their heroes at the Capitol during National Police Week. This summer, it will also help to assure that the children of these heroes not be held back due to finances, but have the ability to travel to their respective cops camps and retreats to either begin or continue their journey to rebuild their shattered lives. Thank you again to Clermont PD, Chief Broadway, and now Chief Grant, and this wonderful community for standing with us in support of these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let's give him another round of applause, please. And if you haven't been around for this event every year, I mean, I think it started just about four years ago, and everything, and this year it's been growing, it's just continued to grow, grow, grow. And I can say, one of the reasons I asked about different agency, I know we had different agencies from all over the state and everything here this past year. I lost track of how many different agencies I counted out there myself. If you haven't had the opportunity to participate in this event, you don't have to run, you can walk too, okay? So come on out, and matter of fact, I actually walk myself, so I can't compete with the chief, so. So you can come out and support us each year. It's usually around March timeframe each year, right here in downtown Claremont, so please, I think we can go bigger than what we've done. I think we sold out last year, but we looking to make it bigger and bigger each year, it's for a great cause. So thank you, Chief, and we look forward to it again in the coming year. So thank you. Next president, we have a presentation. Bulk sanitation pickup and storm water from Public Services Assistant Director Mary Worm.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thanks for taking the time. James Mayworm, Assistant Director in Public Services. Couple of brief presentations. Wanted to take this opportunity, before our budget season gets into full gear, to talk about our bulk collection program, kind of present what it's about, and maybe see if there's any changes that anybody wants to entertain. Quickly, what is bulk collection? Bulk collection to us is generally anything that we can't pick up inside a garbage cart. So that would be refrigerators, tree debris, yard debris, sometimes building debris, anything else. Anything that is up to three cubic yards, you get for free. It's part of your typical sanitation charge and service. Anything over three cubic yards is charged to the resident at a rate of twelve dollars and fifty-four cents per yard. So the additional bulk charges were established about a year and a half ago by ordinance, really at the beginning and conclusion of a longstanding contract that we had, at which our tipping rates at our transfer station were thirty dollars a ton. We were concerned at the time that those numbers were going to go as high as seventy-five dollars a ton. They eventually leveled off at fifty-five dollars a ton. Their current rate is fifty-six oh five. So this really pushed us to look at alternate ways to make sure that the sanitation budget was going to be fully funded. Next slide, please. So like I said, up to three cubic yards is part of what you typically get as your weekly, monthly service. This is an example of what three cubic yards looks like. So three cubic yards is, you know, as it describes, nine feet by nine feet essentially. Next slide. So here are some examples of excessive amounts, things we used to deal with. Next slide. More pictures of what we're generally looking at in terms of excessive amounts. And we still have the basic problem of fly dumping, where things just show up all over the community in random, usually hidden spots. We'll discover it, get calls. It's very, very difficult to find who exactly does this kind of thing, but we just pick it up anyway, so. So here's an example of the process we use when we're out on our routes, on our given collection days. We'll see piles that, you know, immediately the drivers recognize as being beyond the three cubic yards. We'll call one of the supervisors to come out. They will measure the pile, they will calculate it and provide the estimate to the resident for us to come and pick it up. The resident then takes the charge to water billing, pays for it, and then we schedule it and come back and collect it all up. For the first four months of calendar year twenty-five, we have collected seven hundred and fifty-one tons of bulk trash. Our disposal costs are fifty-six oh five. Our total disposal costs have been over forty-two thousand dollars. We charge twelve dollars and fifty-four cents per yard to collect. We have collected six thousand, seven hundred and some dollars. So our final costs are thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars that we are subsidizing through the sanitation fund. So we're really asking, are there any questions at this time? Are there any changes to the program that the City Council would like to see, that we can incorporate into an ordinance modification, or as our budget process goes?
They did this presentation because I think a couple of council meetings ago, I said something about the rates that we charging and everything, but I'm not so concerned about the rates, but my thing is, my concern is what I'm getting a lot of calls on, is that three cubic feet, yards and everything. For example, in one week, I got, I think I got three calls where the truck went out, and it was over three cubic yards, and they wouldn't pick it up, so I get the call about it. And knowing the fact that the people had cut down trees and trimmed trees and everything in their yard, and they put it out there, it wasn't one of them flyby dump, which I know I deal with you all on that on a weekly basis all the time. We trying to figure out ways to catch the people that's doing that kind of thing, but the problem is, you tell them, if they got over three cubic yards, you know, you can put three cubic yards out, then leave the rest in your backyard, next week you can come back and put another three cubic yards, and you'll pick it all up. I mean, so we running back and forth, and we trying, that's kind of like making the residents work a little hard. If they do it all at once and clean up today, why they have to come back next week and continue to try to haul this stuff back out? If we know it's them that's doing it, why can't we just go ahead and take care of them? Because we're not going to charge them extra to come back the next week to pick up the rest of it, see?
That's curious. Howard, my assumption would be that we're just trying to be as flexible and as workable with the residents as possible. You know, we've collected quite a bit of debris over the time now, and most of the people are very appreciative of the fact that we even pick it up. Because there's a lot of communities that simply don't. If you've got excessive piles, that's just something that you have to deal with yourself. And there are free opportunities. I mean, if you've cut down a tree and you see that our fees are kind of high, you can get it over to the log house transfer station, and they'll take that material for free. But, you know, then again, that's a burden on the people, so I, you know, we're looking at the service as being pretty comfortable, and we're really proud to be able to provide it.
But then they come back, when I say this, they come back and say, but we pay, we paid this fee every month for curb size service.
Correct, yes.
What goes on during the rest of the month, like I may put trash out there once or twice a month, and because it's over three cubic yards, I can't get it picked up. I have to come back next week and put it up. But then I don't put anything out there the rest of the year, but I'm still paying that fee each month, okay? So, you know, I can understand what they saying for us. Now, I think we had this conversation years ago, when we started talking about in charge of these fees, where we want to increase fees, and my thing there was the fact that we wanted to charge these extra fees on people, when some of the residents weren't even putting their trash can out but once or twice a month. And half of it, because a lot of them were senior citizens during that time, they wouldn't even have a half a trash can every two weeks. But then we want to put all these extra fees on them. Do we reimburse them when they don't put it out? See?
No, it's, it's, that's...
Yes.
We're going to see how this works.
Yes.
Hi. I share your concerns, Mr. Mayor, and I think that the issue that we have to balance is, of course, our staff's management of the routine and what they can pick up on a regular basis, and also what's fair to the taxpayers. And I think you've made a really valid point about what's fair to the taxpayers. And I share your concerns as a resident. I think that what we want to do is encourage, we talked about affordable housing, affordable living, and I think that's really important. I'm using the lowercase a, affordable, for those who are concerned about politics, just the cost of living, to try to keep it down. But I also want to encourage our residents to keep their homes beautiful. And I think that in keeping your home beautiful, and some of those images, it's pretty easy when you do a hurricane trim of your oak trees, and if we want to have shaded streets and beautiful properties, it's pretty easy to pile up a very large space worth of tree limbs, and that would be far more than three cubic yards, no doubt. So what I would like to see, as staff is working on proposals for budget, is how can we keep the fees in line with where they are now? And can we say, you know, whether it's twice a year or quarterly, you know, we include a large yard debris pickup? And is there some way that we can manage that so that we can plan for it during the times of year that people tend to trim their trees? We want to encourage our residents to do hurricane trims, for example, in the months of, you know, May and June, and we want to encourage our folks to clean up after the dry and the cold season. So there's certain times of year that we are going to see more than three cubic yards of yard debris. But I do think we can distinguish yard debris from trash. And, you know, when you see folks moving out of their homes or doing demolition projects, things like that, that are going to produce a lot of trash, it should be fairly easy for them to plan for, whether it's, you know, waste bins, you know, additional trash. I think that is something that's easier for the residents to manage. But three cubic yards of trash compared to three cubic yards of tree debris are very different from a resident perspective. And like the mayor, I don't want to encourage people to keep very large piles of flammable yard waste in their yard, and most people don't have the vehicles that would be necessary to transport that much tree debris to another location. So we're putting our citizens in a bad position if we don't figure out an easy way for them to handle that. And perhaps something else to consider would be maybe a flat fee, so that you're not sending out somebody to go do measurements and give an estimate and give a quote. It seems burdensome. If there is a large amount of debris, and you told me the flat fee to pick it up is a hundred dollars, I'll add that to my bill. That's fine. At least I know and I can plan for it. So I would like staff to go back and look at other solutions that are in line with those policies. If anybody disagrees, I'm happy to discuss it, but that's my input on it.
And basically, that's all I'm asking, is that, let us take a look at it. Well, one of my thoughts was maybe when homeowner know they're going to be doing this kind of cleanup, call the city, public service, and let them know they're going to have excess trash, and that way we can come out and be prepared for, and everything at that time. And we know it's the homeowner, because I do understand the problem, and as you know, I'm probably one of the biggest callers in the city about flyby dumping. You know, I have a serious problem in my neighborhood doing that, and I'm constantly having to call after I see it sitting there, and it don't get picked up unless I have to call, and I'm tired of having to call by flyby, so I will say this, I've been working with Chief Gracy and everything to try to figure out a way we can catch some of these guys out there doing these things, but I don't like us out there picking up this flyby trash. And when we say flyby dumping, basically what's happening is people going out and they're cleaning up places, yards and everything, they're coming in our neighborhood and just dumping it on the streets in certain locations and everything, and then they're sitting there for weeks because it's excessive, and the city won't pick it up. They have nobody to contact or anything. And after three or four weeks, the residents start calling me, okay? So I have to go to the city, go to Eminem and pick it up, so. It's been going on now for a few years, off and on about this time of the year, so I want to be able to control that, but also don't want to put inconvenience on our resident. For example, I'll use myself again. I did some cleaning up a few weeks ago. I put the half of the trash out on the curb. You came by and picked it up, and just this past, last week, I put the rest of it out. So for the last three, four weeks, it's been sitting in my backyard, waiting until I had time to come back and put out the rest. And I don't think when we cleaning up, me and myself, when I'm cleaning up, I would like to put it all out there once and not have to come back later on and take another day to have to do that, see? So maybe if we can have a call, have them call the city or something, they doing this cleaning up, so we can verify that it's them and not a flyby and everything, maybe. So I don't know. What thoughts?
I think we can come back with some proposals.
Yeah, so my biggest issue with this is that when we look at this, we're only talking about, what was it, seven thousand dollars in recoup fees? And it's obviously taking a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of staff time that's going into trying to recoup those fees, and I don't know what that is. So while I have zero problem with the three-yard rule, I'll be the first one to admit, I have abused it multiple times, although it wasn't a rule then, but at that time, I think I had eight or ten live oaks in my yard, and it was easy to go way over that. And I was appreciative that you guys picked it up, but I also know that it was still my responsibility. So I think some of that comes down to, if you want that in your yard, that's how you want it, you do have to take that responsibility. You know, you guys right now are doing a lot of cleanup on, over the roads, so thank you, Stoney. You might want to backcharge Rick so that you can get some of that money back, because there was a lot of trash along Lake Shore and along my neighborhood, so, you know, you guys are doing a good job with it. But I'm just not sure it makes sense. From a functional standpoint, it makes sense, but from a realistic standpoint, I'm just not sure financially that it does, so. You'll just have to look at it and come back with us, and, but obviously, I want to control people and...
I liked what Councilmember Strange had said about with the hurricane seasons and encouraging our residents to trim the trees, and if there's some type of way to call. Because I remember there was a time when if I wanted to put bulk furniture out, we used to have to call to say, we're going to have bulk furniture out, and then you all would come. Maybe that's what we need to reinstate when it comes into something as this. And the other idea too, when she said about maybe once a year, if we could, you know, give them grace, so to speak, to do that, kind of like our neighborhood, you can have a yard sale only once a year. So maybe we could implement something like that, where once a year, you can have more than, what you're saying, the three cubic yards of trash, because as the mayor had said, you're paying for it every month, and you may only need it once a year, because you're cleaning out, or you're, you know, your college students are leaving, going to their own, you know, those types of things and whatnot, so, yeah.
And I hear what Councilmember Howard is saying about cost and everything, but then I look at it another way, I look at the cost. If I have to have you come out here every week, because I'm putting three this week, three next week, three next week, I think if I get you out there one time and pick it up, it's more cost-effective than having to make you come out here every week.
I was talking about the administrative cost, just to get from, oh, we've got this, so they had to send supervisor out, send a bill out, that person come up, pay the bill, so. But I kind of agree. The other thing to look at is almost like our tax, sales tax holidays, and just do those, if you roll it based on however your structured routes are, and just say, you know what, we can do a, you know, an unlimited here, you know, and just kind of roll it through once every two months or once a quarter. I mean, I think once a quarter is plenty for most folks.
Well, thanks for the feedback. I think we've got some good ideas here, certainly a lot of things we can work with to keep it moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Peters, anyone else?
Well, I wanted to reiterate what Councilman Strange said about, maybe we can do like hurricane holidays and things like that, where we can do like a, once a, you know, a lot of people aren't really trimming their trees and doing this much trash. I mean, we're not talking about throwing refrigerators and couches out, that's still going to be covered through the thing, correct?
Correct, yes.
So we're just talking about branches, trees, limbs, things like that.
Any really large...
And the other thing you would think about is then, what happens if you tell the person, okay, this is going to cost three hundred dollars, and then they go, I can't afford three hundred dollars? Then they just leave it there and make it an eye sore, or then does the city still pick it up? And then, or does then code enforcement get involved? Then they have to get them in there to write them up and have it removed. So it's going to be removed anyway, one way or the other. So either the city has to eat that, or we're going to just put liens on people for not paying.
But in that case, just to say, in that case, if it's someone moving out of their house and you're not going to pick it up, they done sold the house and gone, who you going to put the lien on? Okay? If their house is already sold, who you going to put the lien on? So, but yeah, if you just, that's my concern, is the fact that, hey, if we can come out every week and pick up three cubic yards and everything, and we know it's the homeowner that's cleaning his yard and everything, why can't we just go ahead and make some kind of policy where we can, we can just go ahead and do it at one time, whether then you all having to come out there every week, and then you also making the homeowner having store trash in their yard and everything in the backyard like I did a few weeks ago, and get it all dumped out? And I like the idea, maybe once a year, but me and trying to put a time on that, make a certain period, everybody don't have the time to be able to clean up their yard in February or April and everything, so when you look at that, maybe we have to figure out, say if it's once a month, and I put a designate a month on it, maybe.
Okay. Okay. Well, these are terrific ideas, lots of us to work with. We'll put something together and bring it back to you guys for review. And we're during the budget, one of the two, and see where we go from here. Perfect.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you for getting back with us so quick with that and everything. So appreciate it.
Well, now on to round two, which is an annual stormwater presentation. Basically, what I wanted to share with the council is what activities we are doing to ensure that the lakes around us, rivers and streams are clean, maintained, and, you know, we're doing everything we can not to pollute the waters. This is a requirement as part of our MS4 permit, which is managed by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Next slide, please. So MS4 might be a term that lots of us aren't really familiar with. It stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So if you can see, four S's, MS4. It's part of the MPDES program, which, you know, really originated in 1972 when the federal EPA was established. So over time, it's been modified. But in Florida, this is all regulated by the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection. So what is an MS4? An MS4 is publicly owned, so you won't find HOAs getting a permit for an MS4. Private entities cannot. It'll be a public unit of government. It is specific to stormwater collection as opposed to wastewater sanitary collection. Typically, it's a point source discharge. So if you've got open storm sewer drains that discharge into any of the lakes and rivers, that would be your point source discharge. And it is always a separate system. There are still cities in this country that have both a combined sanitary and stormwater system. So when you have very heavy flooding rains and your bake backs up into your basement, you can imagine the problems there. Our stormwater division is responsible for helping clean the rainwater runoff. We have about 170 miles of stormwater piping. We try to clean 20% of that annually. And on average, we move about 26 tons of debris. Stormwater maintains about 75 nutrient filtration boxes. We get another 18 tons of sediment and debris from that. And last year, we cleaned 170 catch basins and we moved about 568 tons of debris. One of probably the most obvious and visible things that we do to keep water, stormwater clean is street sweeping. So we use vacuum sweepers, which picks up all the pollutant particles that come off of vehicles, either through the exhaust or your rubber tires and things. On the west side of town, we sweep all the streets once a week. That's because we still have points in which we discharge directly into Lake Manyhaha. Lake Manyola's been separated for many years, and we're working to separate out the last of those discharge points on Manyhaha as well. Streets east of 27, we sweep usually once a quarter. So we still, you know, try to kit everything we can get done. We swept 9,400 miles of roads and we picked up 368 tons of debris. Also, as a part of our program, we provide as much education to people as we possibly can regarding what's illicit discharge, what not to put down your storm drain. It's really amazing the kind of things that people will just dump. A couple of weeks ago, we had an opportunity to educate somebody who was dumping yard clippings and dirt and debris down the storm line. Fortunately, the neighbor recognized the fact that that wasn't a good thing to do, so gave us a quick call. We came out, worked with the resident, educated them a little bit, and hopefully we don't have that problem. But we've got things on the city website, we use social media, and we always have booths and special event pamphlets and things like that. So with that, any questions about stormwater?
Anyone? Nope. I thank you, and I love that street sweeper. I know every Thursday morning, I can, almost eight o'clock, he coming by my house.
Not too early to wake you up, I hope.
You know, I have had other people call me and ask me about why their streets aren't being swept, but I say they probably in a private neighborhood and everything, inside gated neighborhood.
Yeah, we do not sweep private streets.
Yeah, we don't sweep private street. But if you're in the city, especially, of course, I stay on the west side, so I see it all the time. It's my understanding wastewater treatment plant is up and running, the new one, ahead of schedule?
Yeah, I'll let Stoney answer those questions.
And he mentioned that Manyhaha are discharged. So that work we trying to get done over there on distance and...
All the dead ends and the Lake Shore right there, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're about three months ahead of schedule. We have part of the new wastewater facility, that expansion, is up and running now, but not all of it. But soon. Way ahead of schedule.
We're ahead of schedule.
Yes, sir.
Well, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And let's continue to work on that discharge for Manyhaha area and everything. So I know we've been talking about that for a while, so we trying to find the funding to get it done, but...
Well, right now, we're working on the design phase, which the council approved last year for some additional funding for that, so we're working on that currently.
How far out is that project? I was asked that today, as a matter of fact.
Which one?
For Lake Shore.
So what we're looking at is we'll do the design this year, and then we'll go in implementation. What do we have, split up, three years?
Yes, three separate projects.
Three projects along Lake Shore. So that way, we can partner hopefully with Lake County Water Authority and St. John's to get the grants to partner with us so we've got the funding.
So we're looking to try to have it completed by 2030.
That's a good goal.
That's a good goal. Yeah, very good goal. I think we mentioned one time before, but we were going to go back and try to look at community block grants for part of that on distance. Were we able to squeeze that in anywhere?
Well, that's another part of the design we're doing is one of the areas that did qualify was area blocks from south of 50. So it does fall within the realm of that. So we're looking at that for design too. So we can, when we do apply, we've got a shovel ready project.
Ready project, and of course, we get that, you know, of course, we can only apply for that every three years or so. But that area do qualify, qualify for it?
It did, yes.
Well, good. I think I've worked on three or four every time we apply for it. We've always been approved for it, so it's a good thing. So I wasn't quite sure whether it was going to qualify or not.
As of right now, we're in good shape, we were told.
Okay. Well, good. Maybe able to get it done there. Thank you.
Anything else?
Anybody else? Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All righty. Next, we have two proclamations. First, we have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday.
Whereas small businesses are the backbone of our economy, representing the spirit of innovation, entrepreneurship, and community investment. And whereas small businesses contribute significantly to local economies by creating jobs, providing unique goods and services, and fostering a sense of place and identity within our neighborhoods. And whereas, supporting small businesses strengthens our communities by encouraging economic diversity, resilience, and sustainable growth. And whereas, it is in the public interest to recognize and celebrate the vital role that small businesses play in the prosperity and cultural richness of our towns and cities. And whereas, the City of Claremont encourages all residents, visitors, and members of our community to support local entrepreneurs by shopping, dining, and engaging with small and independently owned businesses on the second Saturday of the month throughout the year. Whereas, let this day serve as a recurring reminder of the value and importance of our small business community and the lasting impact of our collective support.
Now, therefore, I, Tim Murray, Mayor of the City of Claremont in the state of Florida, do hereby proclaim the second Saturday of each month as Small Business Saturday. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Claremont to be affixed this 10th day of June in the year 2025. The next, uh, what do we have next? Faith and Family Month.
Whereas, faith and family are foundational pillars of strong communities, providing strength, support, and purpose to individuals and families across our great nation. And whereas, families are the bedrock of society, nurturing the next generation and serving as the first teachers of values such as compassion, responsibility, respect, and integrity. And whereas, faith traditions and spiritual practices contribute significantly to the moral and cultural fabric of our communities, inspiring service, fostering hope, and encouraging unity and understanding among diverse peoples. And whereas, the bonds of family, whether formed by blood, marriage, adoption, or commitment, are strengthened by shared beliefs, traditions, and the time spent together in reflection, worship, and service. And whereas, recognizing and celebrating Faith and Family Month encourages individuals and communities to deepen their spiritual lives, cherish time with loved ones, and uphold the values that sustain our common life. And whereas, it is fitting to dedicate time each year to honor the vital role that faith and family play in shaping our lives and building a more compassionate, just, and united society.
Now, therefore, I, Tim Murray, Mayor of the City of Claremont in the state of Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Faith and Family Month. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Claremont to be affixed this 10th day of June in the year 2025. Thank you. Next item is public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the council may please come to the microphone and state your name and address. This portion of the meeting is only for items that are not on the agenda. In the interest of time, efficiency, and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council, given the opportunity to do so, each speaker will be permitted three minutes to address the council. To avoid disruption of the meeting, speakers should avoid inappropriate language, personal attacks, derogatory statements, and direct comments to the city council. Everyone is requested to be respectful of each other, even when we disagree. This is time for public comment. Anyone, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Cindy Doyle, and I live at 1020 West Manyhaha Avenue, Claremont, Florida, 34711. Am I allowed to address more than one thing?
You have three minutes, ma'am. Yes, you are.
Okay, first of all, I want to announce two events that are happening on Saturday in the City of Claremont. We're having a protest at 10 to 11:30, and it'll be on Route 50 between West Avenue and Eighth Street. And the protest is called No Kings in America. And on Saturday evening, June 14th, we're having a rally and a march through downtown Claremont. And again, it will be to address no kings allowed in America. And we keep our protests very peaceful. We have a very good relationship with Chief Grasik. He and his police, they treat us very well and with respect, unlike a lot of the other parts of the country. I feel safe here, even though there are more of the, my opposition than me. I still feel safe going out there. We protest every Thursday at Hancock and 50. We're in front of Tesla every Saturday morning. And on the whole, we're getting great receptions. We get a lot of middle fingers, a lot of exhaust from these large trucks that try to kill us old ladies and hurt our lungs. But, you know, we deal with that because it's part of being an American. I just have a question about this family and faith. Maybe I'm wrong, I, maybe I misunderstand civics, but I thought that government and religion were supposed to be not together. Then why would you proclaim a day of that? And if you have no family, you're not part of it. I just feel like it's very divisive. If you have no beliefs, it's a divisive thing. It's not really something that brings people together. And another thing, I don't think you should have Fridays off, you know, the...
Ma'am, I can't let you talk about that. That's on the agenda.
Oh, it's on the agenda. Okay. Okay, here's my other one. Why do we have city council meetings at three o'clock in the afternoon? Is it to avoid the public? Because most of the public can't attend at this time. I can because I have my own hours, but a lot of people work, you know, the nine to five and all that, and they can't attend. I don't understand why you did that, why you made that. And I would like to understand it. I would like to have an answer somehow from you all. And how do we get answers from you? Anyway, that's all I have to say.
All righty. Thank you.
John Tadona, 3611 Briar Run Drive. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City City Manager, City Attorney. There's a link to Groveland's Community Development Codes that was emailed to you. You might please check your spam folders. Perhaps my Gmail account is not going through. Anyway, Groveland's codes spell out design standards and were a combination of best practices of several of the towns like Disney Springs. Their approach is essentially, it's our way, not the developer's way. The pushback from developers is practically nonexistent. It's about taking a stand and telling developers what they can do or cannot do, and no one is suing Groveland. The codes include a tree survey, landscape plan, traffic plans, and much, much more. Yes, Groveland can insist a developer keep existing groves of trees on any cleared property or replace torn down trees with the same tree, not a substitution or a bush. Groveland's Community Development Codes open avenues of negotiation with developers. I personally spoke with Mr. Dwayne Jones, the P&amp;Z Division Manager, and he mentioned the new Cypress Bluff HOA as one of the first with the new codes. Groveland even has a developer checklist. Developer approvals usually take anywhere from three to four months, as each Groveland department has an opportunity to opine and express their concerns, whether that be Public Works, FD, PD, and others. So once again, please consider a 12-month moratorium on new construction and adjust the impact fees accordingly. The 12-month moratorium would give you more time to update our comprehensive plan with segments of Groveland's codes and updated design standards. Highlands County already has templates for third-party traffic studies and mobility fees. Claremont does not have to reinvent the wheel at all. The Groveland codes are 131 pages. I read them all, and I'm here to provide you with some highlighted Cliff Notes, if I Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Jeff McClure. I'm the manager for the Emily Thrift Shop at 770 West Montreux Street, Claremont, 34711. I have been fortunate enough to be the manager of the thrift store and connected with the Animal League, which has been a member of Claremont for over 20 years. We rescue and rehome abused pets and homeless pets. And as I said, it's been a part of the Claremont area for over 20 years. Over the last 15 months, I have encountered many instances with the continued operation of the bars after hours, during hours, food truck Fridays, wine nights, et cetera, et cetera. There is a lot of... There is a lot of nonsense activity going on in the after hours of six P.M. I have cameras, other businesses that I'm collaborating with, we have cameras, we're recording this stuff. It's just to the point, seventy percent of our business is seniors, and our seniors are scared to come downtown after six o'clock. I hear it every day, especially on Sundays. They don't like to drink at seven o'clock in the morning on Sundays. They think it should be after church at noon. I know that's Claremont's policy. I think it's seven, it can start at seven A.M. But the biggest thing is, is the activities that's happening after hours. It's really getting serious. I've been dealing with this for fifteen months. And I'll give you some examples. On Sunday, May the eleventh, I visually was outside unloading a donor, and five individuals left the bar beside of our business. Two was carrying full sixteen-ounce draft beers. One was carrying a mixed drink, one was carrying a bottled beer. Those five individuals, males, got in two different vehicles and drove, could have been an accident, killed innocent people of Claremont. But this is happening all the time. The other thing is, is those bars, based on what the customers have told me, what they've taken pictures of, what we've recorded, those bars, the owners, the bartenders, the managers, and the servers are drinking from the time they come in until the time they leave. And according to statute, Florida statute seven nine zero dash oh six, it is prohibited for any owner, manager, server, bartender to engage drinking before, during, and after business hours. But folks, it's happening. That's why the seniors are scared to come downtown. As I said, seventy percent of our business is seniors, and I engage with my customers every single day. And there is grave concern about what's going on. We need bagel shops, we need ice cream shops, we need other businesses downtown other than bars. It's, I've seen this too many times. I love Claremont. I sold my house in Mount Door, moved here a year ago, and I love it, and I love the people. But I have a grave concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charlene Harrison, fourth, DeSoto Street, Claremont. And I'd like to make a destination, I hate politics. And I say this because I'm from a southern. I'd rather stay home and clean my bathroom and everybody in here than be in here tonight. And unfortunately, I've got to be here because of a situation that happened. I started getting calls yesterday, more today. And this thing about changing it where, you heard the lady earlier, to three o'clock both the meetings now. I was in that meeting, I guess where y'all made a final vote after somebody earlier that night said, well, we're looking and we're going to stand back, and then all of a sudden, y'all have a vote. Now, I know some of y'all, and I voted for you, but here's the deal. A lot of people think my claim to fame is about this police department in two thousand that myself and Linda Charlton and FDL lead dismantled. One thing I'm really proud of, I opened up and two other people, which was Hal Turble, I'm sorry, three, Hope Lamp and Speedy Wolf. You could come in this council, just like Michelle Pine said, well, this is a business meeting, and as a courtesy, y'all can just kind of be here. I want to remind all of you that the taxpayers put you there, and you work for us, not the other way around. And one of the things I was proud of that I had to come in here and stand year after year after year, starting twenty-five years ago, is I opened this up to the public. They looked at you like, why are you in here speaking? Like, you're really not supposed to be here. Thanks for being here, but you know, kind of patronizing, and we don't need to see you again. Well, I want to tell you this, I've heard that there was some talk, and I wasn't here because I can't get here at three. And I had to have somebody, that I had to have sit with an elderly person right now and pay for so I could be down here, not a happy camper. And I'm tired of seeing everything in this town being dismantled. I'm really sick of it. I mean, I'm up to my limit. And Mr. Peterson, I did call him. I am really glad that you opened it up to the seniors because we left a certain amount of people out, and we should do that. The second one should go back to six thirty. Do you know for all of y'all, all those years, it was at seven o'clock? And I'll tell you what, Hal Turble, that sat here for four terms, best mayor we ever had, and a hometown boy, he said, if you don't like it up here and it's past your night-night time, you need to get up and resign and leave. Because he said, when Mrs. Smith is here, Mrs. Jones is here, I'm going to hear them out. And you know those meetings went to eleven o'clock every night? And Hal Turble had to get up at five A.M. to go do his job the next day? I never heard that man ever complain in his life. And now, we have the state of Florida, with me being a fourth-generation Florida girl, that made that statute years and years ago, you know, that... And we know the Constitution. I'm a Constitution girl, and we're seeing it from Washington flow down to here, is that it allows you to come and address and redress your council. And I'm going to deal with you, Mr. Wa, about this thing that the mayor reads because it's illegal as crap, okay? You can call y'all two-headed, you can do whatever you want to do. I don't think it's nice. But guess what, the Constitution allows you to do it. But you guys need to think, and you need to put it back where that second one is at six thirty, and let the people that work here, because they're still sitting out on fifty and can't even get here at the end of the meeting, I heard y'all was bright idea. Doesn't work at all. Now, you needed to have a butt-whipping tonight, because I know some of y'all. But if this is a problem, resign. And we'll go have another special election and get somebody. And Mr. Peterson, I'm not mad at you, I know it, but they ran with it like, oh, oh, now we'll get out at three and we'll get home. Well, it ain't about y'all, it's about these people sitting in this audience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Devon Marie, Mandarin Drive, Claremont. I just wanted to speak about the playgrounds in the city. I can speak as a mom, a young mom of small children. We don't have any really playgrounds here. Paradise Park on the twenty-seven is in rough shape. The swings are falling apart, the slides are closed. It's basically a safety hazard. Two of the other parks have no sun covering whatsoever, and they're also in dire need of updating and repair. And the only good park is Groveland Cherry Lake. And you know, the entire city is going there. It's packed every single afternoon, morning, especially in the summer. So I would love to see if we can just create some more playgrounds for the kids, safe ones that have sun covering and updated equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Daryl Woodhouse, I live at twenty-ten Sunset Lane, Claremont. I just have a traffic issue. The traffic coming into Claremont on South Lake Shore coming up to Hooks has been a problem, is still a problem. It's, they're not doing thirty miles an hour. They hit the stop sign at Brogdon, and it just basically slows them down a little bit. My neighborhood is before you get to Hooks, and people are cutting through on Crescent to get in front of maybe two or three cars to wait at the light at Hooks and Twenty-seven. We thank you for the stop sign, that you guys were instrumental in putting that in, and that was quick action, and that has helped. But it has, as it's been there over time, people are now just kind of slowing down for the stopping and continuing on. I would personally like to see the speed limit on Lake Shore there from where the city limit starts up to Hooks be lowered to twenty-five miles an hour as it is when you get beyond Hooks on Lake Shore continuing into Claremont. I would also like, in my specific neighborhood, on the Crescent, that lowered down to fifteen. The speed limit is set twenty-five, and people are doing twenty-five. However, as I'm walking my dogs, twenty-five miles an hour, whether, some people are respectful and they slow down, but not everybody. And twenty-five miles an hour with pedestrians, a couple of dogs, is still too fast, in my opinion, so. Anything we could do to address that? The last little thing that I do have, I know there's been talk about it before, but the plaza up on Twenty-seven, my personal thing is the Planet Fitness that's there, but that whole complex, there's only one entrance off of Twenty-seven and one exit. There's, I don't know why, what's stopping this from allowing people to get out onto Anderson? I understand the residents would probably complain about that, but that property's been commercial. They knew something was going to be built there eventually. It would actually ease traffic if we could open that exit up. But those are my comments, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jenny May, four zero six two Greystone Drive. I wasn't going to speak at public comment, but she brought up a memory of the park. So while I was driving around the neighborhood of Twelfth Street and also off of Legendary, because I go to National Trading Center, I noticed the road, not Legendary, but across the way from Legendary and also on Twelfth Street, all the trees are completely chopped. They're completely like trimmed. It's just awful. So you see the oak, and it used to have two sides, and now it's just one side, and it's that whole street of Twelfth Street. So I would like to know, who damaged those trees? Who's in charge of the trees? And if, in the future, if we're going to be planting in the right of way, we've got to really figure out what to do, especially under those power lines. But it's the, definitely Twelfth Street from Fiftieth going up past the park, and then it's Legendary and Hancock. So as soon as you cross over, there's an apartment complex, I think it's Avenir, that whole area as well. The oaks are completely in half. So, yeah, I love trees, but I really don't like half a tree. I like a full tree, so. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Brian Bain, two forty-five Nautica Mile Drive. I think many of us can agree that the ending of the last council meeting was sad. We had members of the council and the interim city manager raising their voices, some might say yelling, engaging behavior that I think a lot of educators would have if it happened at school or on the playground, or even parents or other adults at a park, if it happened at a park, would have intervened. I'm not placing blame. I've stood up here before on multiple occasions and asked you to find ways to work together for the benefit of the citizens, business owners, property owners, us, the taxpayers, and even the people who visit here, and the tourists that visit our city. I'm here again to ask the same. I can disagree with you without disliking you. We can disagree without disdain. It is not impossible to be civil, to focus on collaboration and cooperation and find ways to work together. It's what we as citizens do every day when we go to work, and that's what you're doing here. You're here to work for the citizens. We do it every day when we go to work, help our service organizations, volunteer in our churches, or even our non-for-profits. It's what our children do in school. It's the expectation, it's part of the fabric that makes us a community. Now, I get politics will always be politics. However, when you stop campaigning, I'm sorry, however, when you never stop campaigning and always operate as a candidate instead of an elected official focusing on good governing, serving the common good, and seeking ways, we lose. This whole city loses. Athlete Lynn Dan said, it's our responsibility, but not burden, to be champions. Please focus, please focus more on governing and consensus-building versus scoring political points and making the other side look bad. When you do that, you're only making Claremont look bad. There's no other side. It's, we're Claremont. We're the gem. We should be what other municipalities want to be and aspire to be. Be those champions. And I also want to echo Ms. Forth's statements. I a hundred percent agree with her, and I'm glad to see that she's speaking out on the council meeting time changes because I think three o'clock is really, the rationale is disingenuous, if not dishonest. And it needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Paula Hoysington. I reside at five six four East DeSoto Street. Want to reiterate the reconsideration of the council meeting times starting, at least the second one, starting at six thirty, so that it's more convenient for everyone to attend. And I have questions on the statement on the agenda regarding appealing a decision that's made by the council. How far back can you go to appeal the decision? Where do you get the verbatim information to present your appeal? I know it refers to a statue, but if someone, I mean, a staff, would call me and direct me in the right direction, I'd be very appreciative. Do I get the information from public records requests of the issue in which I want to appeal? How does that work? The other thing is the, I guess this is more of a question. Like, when people stand in the intersections, particularly Fifty and Bloxham, and they're soliciting money, is that like, anybody can do that? Or is there something we can do to prevent that? Because it's very annoying and it's not safe. And you don't know if the organization out there is a legitimate organization. And the way things are happening now is kind of, I mean, I know you let your window down at your own risk, right? You don't know who's there. But is there something that can be done about that? Or is that just an automatic right as a citizen? I mean, we don't even know they live here in Claremont, right? So that was one thing. And the other thing that I want to reiterate to what Brian said about, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I watched it. And I don't think any of you would be proud of your children if they were behaving like that in public. And like I said, we're here to work as one. We may not always agree, but at least we should be able to conduct ourselves in a manner in which we are proud. I mean, that council meeting could go viral. And I would hate for Claremont to be known, and we see it on national news on some show that decides to pick it up, that people who were elected by the people for the people can't even conduct themselves to do the business of the people in a civil way. Just ask that you all look within your hearts and remember why you ran for office. Remember what your goals and what your promises are. And understand to respect each other. Like you said, you don't have to like it, but respect each other and conduct yourselves as adults, not as some spoiled children who didn't get their way and you're having a temper tantrum. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's... Okay.
Good evening, Council. Mike Kramer, two oh eight Nautica Mile. I want to thank you for giving me just a moment. And I'm not here to complain. I want to say thank you again. It's funny, we talked about bulk pickup because I'm also the H2A president for the yacht club, the Claremont Yacht Club. And I thanked the city for coming and cleaning up a whole lot of yard waste we had a few months ago after the hurricane. I wanted to reach out and say thank you to another community service that helped us out today. RJ's Boat Lift, which is a local boat lift dealer in the area, contacted me as the president and said, we noticed as we're driving by all these destroyed boat lifts. We lost about twenty boats and lifts in the last hurricane, and they were all piled up. And city worked with us great, getting everything that we could clean up, but the bulk aluminum frames and everything that was out there. Anyway, Dick and Pam from RJ's reached out to me and said, look, we put in most of those lifts, and we drive by there every day, and we feel really bad about it, and that lake is our community lake. We'd like to come clean it up. So they just left, and I spent most of the day with them, and they did it for free. But I wanted to say thank you to a business in the community who, they weren't thinking themselves. They spent the entire day out there, and they worked cutting and loading, and two truckloads worth of scrap aluminum were taken out of Lake Miniola, which only benefits our entire, the entire city to have that stuff cleaned out. And so when I first moved to this city, I went and bought a new pair of shoes at the local big department store, and my neighbor gave me, holy heck, he said, Mike, you live in a small town, and you got a shoe store right downtown. And yeah, you might pay a couple of dollars more for that shoe store price downtown, but you're supporting the local community. And every dollar you put back into the local community instead of the big shopping stores comes back to you hand, you know, hand over fist. Well, RJ's has done a great job, and I wanted to just say thank you to a local business that did an amazing job. And with a few seconds left, I left the meeting last, the last meeting and went home because it was winding down. You all were just patting each other on the back, and it got quiet. And my wife had called, she said, dinner's ready. So I went home and I flipped it on the TV, and you were the most entertaining show I've ever seen. I'm going to tell you right now, and I have a lot of respect for all of you up here. But the last two people said it and said it well. Man, just take a long, deep breath before you ever get more of those catfights again. And any of you folks that sat quietly might want to step in and calm these people down because it was truly entertaining. And I hadn't thought about what Ms. Hoysington said. Yeah, you could easily go... Yeah, you could, you could easily go viral off what the, off that thing. But anyway, I want to thank, thank you all for what you're doing, and thank you for that bulk pickup recently.
Thank you. This is public comment. Anyone in the public wish to make comment that pertain to anything that on the agenda may come to microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one else, I close public comment.
Can I just take one minute? Because Paradise Park was brought up, and I learned something today, and I think we ought to bring it to the council, because we have to figure this out.
Well, Mr., Mr., Howard, I wrote all this down.
Yeah, it's not to answer it. It is, that's actually a private park. And so I wanted the council to understand that. And it's actually owned by Rick Van Wagner. He allows the public to use it. And so we, as a council, probably need to have a conversation whether we want to enter into a public-private partnership to help him out.
Okay.
Just wanted to let everybody know that that's a private park.
Okay. Well, let me say this, and the reason I was saying this to Mr. Howard is the fact, I wrote down a lot of the questions you all asked. As I explained to council, well, Mr. Van Wagner and a few other council member, I usually like to take this time, and normally we have reports or something somewhere in here, and I usually like to do, use that time, report time to do this. But as you notice, our council agenda, we move reports back to the end. So we will get to answer some of them questions for you at the end when doing our reports, okay? But now we're, I need to know, Mr. Van Wagner, is there any change to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number six is going to be, we're have, there's a request to table that until June 24th.
Item number six. To June 24th, you say?
Yes.
I need a motion.
I need to read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 2025-011, an ordinance under the Code of Ordinances of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Claremont referred to in Chapter 122 of Ordinance Number 289C, Code of Ordinances, rezoning the real properties described herein as shown below, providing for conflict, severability, administrative correction of Scrivener's error, recording, publication, and an effective date.
Make a motion to table item number six, ordinance number 2025-0112, 62425.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to table item number six, ordinance number 2025-011, until 24 June 2025. Any further discussion? And not all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair vote as well. I think I heard a aye from you, Ms. Strange.
You did.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Any other changes, Mr. Van Wagner?
No other changes.
Okay. In that case, the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine, non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the council, city council, wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. The consent item for tonight is items one through five. Anyone wish any item to be pulled from items one through five?
Items two and three, please.
Two.
Two and three.
And three. Any other? Any other item, other item need to be pulled?
Number one, the actual minutes.
Okay. Any other items?
I actually have a question, Mayor. We had some revisions to the number 10, I think, ordinance, and I just wanted to make sure that that is in our, if it's what's up for vote tonight. It is? Okay, then I'm, I'm good.
Number 10? Okay. Erin, yes, ma'am?
Number nine?
No, ma'am. Just item one through five.
But is that being voted today, or?
Item number nine will be taken, considered today.
Okay, thank you.
Right. We'll give you a chance to speak when we get to that, ma'am. Thank you. If there's no other items, I entertain a motion for item, consent items four and five.
Motion approved. Consent agenda items number four, piggyback purchase, fire station, three generator, and item number five, resolution 2025-016R.
A second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of consent items number four and five. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 And the chair vote as well. Motion passes 5-0. Item number one, yes, ma'am?
Jenny May, 4062 Greystone Drive. I'm just comparing these minutes to the minutes that are prepared for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it's just like night and day, apples and oranges. Ours are pretty lengthy and very, you know, very specific. On this, if you compare it to the TV, what you're watching on YouTube to this, it's completely, you're missing information here. So, especially on the comprehensive, like, is that what, I spoke on that? So, on page one, you guys, we have some discussions here, and I know Mr. Howard had mentioned about the overlay, and he had mentioned possibly getting professional to do, to work on the overlay. So, the, there is no mention in regards to, there is a mention about the consensus to move forward with the, with the current process, and I think you all were okay with that, but also there were talks about a possible RFQ that Mr. Van Wagner had spoken about. That's not in here. So I think it's best that, a lot of that information should be in here. And the only reason why is that, you know, these are archived, and some people actually use this for review. I look at past minutes in regards to planning and zoning commissions or other council in regards to, you know, previous projects that have been put forth. So, that information's kind of good to have, but yeah, that, there's definitely missing information within page, the end of page one and the top of page two.
Okay.
And it's all about the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Ms. Van Wagner, did you want to address that? Or you want me to address it? Did you want to address it?
Mr. Wall looked at some changes we made with the clerk's office today, so if you wouldn't mind addressing that.
Well, I was asked to look at the revised minutes, and the prior version of the minutes didn't talk about the detail that you now have in front of you. You have additional detail in a new version of the proposed minutes. It does talk about, I think, what Ms. May is talking about, which is the RFQ. And that may not be a version that you have. I don't know. So I think this is just an attempt to memorialize what took place at the last meeting.
Okay. Well, basically, yes, that was discussed the last meeting. I understand, and most of these meetings are recorded, and then the clerk go back and they transcribe these minutes and everything. So if there's anything missing, or you read the minutes, there's something missing, we have no problem, but you're bringing it to our attention and going back and getting it, making sure it's in there if you feel like it needs to be there. Now, do they transcribe them exactly word for word? No, because it's kind of difficult when you're trying to sit there and read that tape and everything. Of course, you can always, one of the other things you can always do, you can actually get a CD and a copy of the, of the actual recording yourself as well. So you can have everything that went on word for word. Okay.
So I do have a question for Mr. Wall, and I suppose Mr. Van Wagner, though this might be for Tracy, is we got updated minutes today that reflect more specifically what happened to the last meeting. But how does the public get a copy of that? What is the process so that those in the public understand?
Well, I mean, I think there's two ways for the public to receive that. One is, I think the public agenda packet is published on, online, and so, to the extent that there are no changes, and that's posted with everything else, they can go to the website, which I think is, I mean, I've got a copy of it open. It's claremontfl便 portal dot civic clerk dot com. The other way is a public records request could be made. So, those are the two main ways that I'm aware of.
But we get a supplemental packet at these meetings, and how does the public know what it is that we're voting on?
They don't necessarily get a copy of the supplemental packet ahead of time.
Is that something that we can change somehow?
The answer is yes. I mean, but I don't want to speak for the clerk's office. I mean, there's ways of doing that.
Yeah, that's why I thought maybe this should be directed to Mr. Van Wagner, though I think it's a question for the clerk's offices. When we get these supplemental packets, how does the public know what it is that we're voting on? And how can we better notify the public so that they know that we've received additional information since the packet was published publicly?
Well, let me, let me say this, Ms. Strange. I understand what you're saying, and yes, it would be great to be able to get it, but sometimes they make adjustments and give us supplemental things at the last minute, just before the council, so it'd be kind of hard for us to go back. Now, the agenda is usually, I think it's coming out on Tuesdays now? It used to be Thursdays?
We have it to you by... We have the agenda to you by Wednesday.
By Wednesday and everything, and if it's there, that's why I was just saying that if you go to the website and you see something missing out of the minutes, contact us or contact the city clerk so they can go back and they can adjust that, and then we can update the agenda online. Or you can, like I say, Mr. Wall said, you can always request official copy of the, of the minutes along with the CD itself, okay? Anytime, it's public record, right?
Well, I understand that, but I think that having the public involved in the process of the governance of the city is important, and we're sitting here looking at a set of agenda minutes that the public hasn't seen, and so that doesn't seem just to me, and it just occurred to me that we always get these packets, and we're voting on something that the public can't see. How difficult is it for a supplemental packet to be uploaded to the portal? It's an honest question. I don't have the answer to it.
And personally, I don't, this is Christian, I don't have the information on that either. I will say that different softwares do different things, so I don't use the software, and I'm not sure.
I mean, Ms. Strange, I'm not saying it's difficult to upload that. I'm just saying sometime, you know, when it, like, for example, I walked in here today, and one of the things I did, looked at everything, and I realized we have somebody different saying, saying the invocation today than I was told yesterday, okay? You know, so, of course, I didn't know that until I got here, so these kind of things come at the last minute. And that's all I'm saying, they can probably go back and upload it, but if you come into the meeting and they just upload it at 1:00, do you have time to go back and pull it? Okay? You know? So I don't think it's any problem getting it uploaded, anything, it's just that, how soon they know and make the correction, how soon, and they could probably go right away and get it uploaded. Am I mistaken, Mr. Wayne, right? We can upload them right away. I just that when everything is finalized, a lot of times, just before the meeting happened. And that happened to me regularly. It pleased me, just about every council meeting, I have something changed, I don't know about it until I get here, okay?
Well, I understand that, but like today, we had an hour before we even got to public comments, so that was plenty of time for someone sitting in the audience to go to the agenda online. I mean, it's you and I talking, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious, I think Mr. Van Wagner needs a consensus on if this is something that as a council, we want the public to be able to see before we vote on it, or if it's something we're comfortable saying the, the public can learn after the fact by doing a FOIA request on something they didn't know existed. And I, for one, think that if we're getting a supplemental packet, the public should get a supplemental packet. But I might be the lone voice on that.
No, you, you're right. They need to vote on whatever, whatever the official meaning is, because once we vote on it, that's still official minutes. And I totally agree. Now, the other thing I would, I'd say we can do, instead of, and I think they used to do this, instead of approving the minutes from last meeting, the next meeting, they delayed it to a, a meeting or two to have, to be able to go through and put it, everything in there. If I'm not mistaken, they used to do that before, okay? So...
Well, and it's not just about the minutes. Last week, we got a financial report that wasn't in the packet. I mean, we, or, sorry, two meetings ago. So we frequently get supplemental materials that aren't just minutes. So that's what I'm wondering, if, if council has a direction for Mr. Van Wagner, or if we're comfortable staying the way we are with the presentation of these supplemental packets without making it public?
Ms. Van Wagner?
I'm, I'm happy to do however you'd like. Perhaps I could recommend that we put the minutes for this meeting back on the next meeting, that we could, like you said, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
But I, I'm happy to do it however you'd like. Sometimes do, things do come up last minute. Like, like this issue came up last night to me. We fixed it today, and that's why we didn't get it quicker. So, I'm happy to do it.
Well, I don't, I don't mind moving forward today. I'm, I'm going to vote to approve the minutes that are in our supplemental packet, but my concern is the public and moving forward, what process do we want our staff to follow?
Can I suggest something? Since I'm the one that brought it up, I apologize if I'm not allowed to, or... It could be, since you guys got it the last minute, and this is on TV, and it's being recorded, to put the new agenda so that the public here and the public who's looking at it could see it.
Ma'am, it's not, it's not the agenda itself, it's the minutes.
I'm sorry, the minutes. I'm not talking about the agenda, I meant, I meant the minutes.
Well, the new minutes, they should have had them online by now, right?
Well, I pulled the ones that were online. But I'm just saying, if you wanted to maybe show it, and you didn't want to push it to the next meeting, that's just me.
Well, ma'am, I think what's in our package right now is the old minutes, so if we want to vote on, on the updated minutes, we have to push it to the next meeting so we can get a copy and look at it as well, because I haven't seen the updated copy.
Yeah, I would make a motion to, to move it to the next meeting, so this way we can evaluate it better.
We're talking about apples and oranges and car tires. Nicole, if, when we get something updated, on, when we go to our agenda site, are we able to update that in real time?
So, we can revise an agenda, an agenda packet. It's not going to tell you what's revised. It's going to tell you it's a revised packet, and then you're going to have to go through unless you're then told on that. I, I can look into it. I am not aware that on that site, I can like, mark something saying, "This is what's changed." So if it's 400 pages, you will get another 400, you know, maybe 401 pages, but it's not going to tell you what's different.
So, would you be able to put that on the actual agenda beside a piece revised? And I think that would solve what Allison's talking about. I think it would let everybody know. So I don't, I don't know if that's doable for you guys or not.
As long as that is what Rick tells, yes, it, it is a capability we have, if that's what...
So, does that solve? Okay, Allison gave me a thumbs up. So if that solves, and if you're comfortable with that, and you want to direct staff, if everybody else is good with that, then they can actually put it on the agenda form that something was revised, upload it in real time, and, I mean, I'm comfortable with that if everybody else is.
Yep, we're fine.
I just want the public to have a chance to see that we see something different. So when we're voting on the minutes, you know, Ms. May didn't know that we had already addressed the issue that she was concerned about in the minutes, so I think that that would have been helpful for her to know. And I think it's good, you know, we got the financial report last time. That was awesome, and I think the public needs to be able to see that. So, yes, if that's possible, and the council wants to see that, and staff can do it, I think that that, I think we owe it to the public to make sure they know what it is that we're voting on and what we're seeing to make decisions on. That being said, I'll move to approve the minutes as amended and provided in our supplemental packet.
Second.
I think I had a motion, but nobody seconded it. No, well, Mr. Peterson had made a motion earlier. With nobody, nobody seconded.
Correct.
Okay. So that motion dies. So now I have...
She made a motion, I got a second.
I got another motion and a second to go ahead and approve the minutes as, as amended, minutes as amended. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And the chair vote as well. Motion passes 5-0. No, I just needed to clear it, because I know he made a motion. Item number two, who pulled that one?
Of Allison.
I pulled it.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I pulled it. I think it needs to be discussed, right?
Yes, ma'am, it's on you.
Oh, well, I, I just don't think that the, the plat design here is family-friendly. I don't think it's neighborhood-friendly. I don't see sidewalks, I don't see school space, I don't see park space, I don't see grocery space, I don't see commercial space. I think, I think it's more suburban sprawl, and I don't think it's good for the citizens of Claremont.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Is this on?
Platinum number two, Parkside Trails. I actually, again, made copies for everybody.
So when I, when I looked at this, I, I couldn't stop with thinking about how a combination of Section 10 Policy 1.1.1 and the Groveland Codes come into play here. There are 245 residential lots. You'd have to agree that we, at least four people per home. That's 980 people in this area. And according to 1.1.1, for every thousand people, there's 10 acres of open space. So on what I'm gonna hand out to you, there are some things that are designated as open space, but I, I can't tell what size they are. There's also what I understand to be maybe this gray area that either a stormwater space or a retention pond acts as a open space, which is kind of weird, because I certainly wouldn't be walking through a retention pond. Can we hold the developer accountable or highly suggest that a trail goes around a retention pond or the stormwater area? Will there be benches on it? Will it be lit? Can we put a gazebo, some sort of a rest area where people could be talking and walking? So similar to what Councilwoman Strange is saying, there's nothing here that shows any of that. There's nothing here that shows what the size of the retention pond is and how it relates to the open space. Again, I think the Groveland Design Codes would be perfect here with that checklist. And the other last concern I have is always, we do things with one lane in and one lane out out of everything that we do. I certainly think a traffic survey would be awesome here. How does a pumper truck or a hook and ladder get in this area to save my mom from having a heart attack? It doesn't look like there's a whole lot of room to put a 40-foot rig in anything there. And at that point, I would just like to get my notes to you.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. You done?
Uh, with two, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. stay up for three. Charlene Harrison, fourth, the Soto Street, Claremont. Biggest question I have, whose bright idea was this to put two and three on the consent agenda? We call it, we used to call it dirty work agenda, where you just slip things through. Why is this on the consent agenda? And Mr. Tadona, would you like to run for city council? You're way too smart, dude. Whose idea was this to put it on the consent agenda? You're not gonna answer? Was it you, Rick? Or who told you to put it on there? I'm sorry? It's not a secret. I just want to know.
I, I get with staff, and staff makes recommendations, and then we move.
So who was staff that wanted this on consent? Who does that mean? The planning and zoning? I mean, Kurt's here. I don't know. Was that Kurt? Kurt's going, yeah. Was it you? Is that who it was, the planning and zoning staff?
We work together looking at these things, but there's agreements already in place that have to be considered in all these things, such as the finances. This was done years ago, Charlene, or Ms. Worthit.
No, I understand. But a lot of people, the people don't even know about consent agenda, and that is my, I'm always about open government. I try to say that. That's me. And I'm tired of stuff being slipped under the rug on the public. So that's what I wanted to know. So it's staff, and staff directed you in a roundtable to put that on there?
They're not directing me. They're working with me, and they give me their suggestions, and we go from there.
So it was an agreement between y'all to put that on the consent?
We, we put it on there. I knew about it as well. We all put it on there together. I'm not gonna say one person did that, because...
Okay, so I echo the same thing as Mr. Tadona. And yeah, those issues are very serious and something we need to look at. Probably should have been on a regular agenda item, no matter, I don't care if it was done 20 years ago. Anyway, no, I, I echo it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Item number two, anyone else? Anyone in the public want to comment on item number two? Seeing no one.
Aaron Struckmeyer, Polte Home Company, 4901 Vineland Road, Orlando, Florida, here representing the developer. So just to clarify some of your questions about sidewalks and things like that, those things are not depicted on the final plat. Sidewalks are located within the rights of way, but some of those engineering details are part of the construction plans and PSP, which has previously been approved by the staff. Our plat is consistent with all of the prior PD and PSP approvals, which have previously been approved at these public hearings. And so we believe that the application is consistent with all the approvals and the requirements of Florida statute in order to record a plat. And then from some of the questions regarding open spaces and things like that, again, that's depicted in the PSP and the zoning approval, which we previously had in place here and available to answer any additional questions that the council might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor, I, I do just have to, sir, did you get a copy of what was presented to the council? By Mr. Tadona, the public? I, I have to make sure you get a copy of it, so I don't, that's all. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I close the public comment portion and come back to council. Mr. Waugh, I'm curious. This is, this is basically a plat we just approved, and all this was, if I'm not mistaken, all this, item two and three was approved years ago and everything. And according to our ordinance and everything, I think they met all requirements for landscaping, green space, and all that at the time when it was approved. However, I don't think it was all approved here in the city and everything. It was done through the county, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I guess my question at this point is, is the fact that we have pretty much no more choice, you know? I, I didn't agree with it when I saw it on the consent agenda. I kind of questioned it myself again, but when I thought about it, hey, these are two items that was approved a long time ago, and this is somewhat about the discussion we had for funds last week. It was all approved years ago. So we're pretty much at the point where we basically have no other choice but to kind of move forward with what we have.
I, I think the way it works, mayor, is, I, I think you're basically right. I think in summary, when you have standards for plats and the plat meets those standards, it's kind of an administrative thing. In other words, there may be some give and take around the margins about what can be negotiated and stuff like that. But if it fits the clear standards, then, you know, not approving it is potentially a reversible error on appeal, a subject I may take up in the comments. But, so I, my understanding is that's right. Now, I don't know the history that goes back years and years and years on it, to be candid. So I can't answer as to that.
Okay, okay. But I'm just, I mean, I know there are some green space. I think Ms. Strange had a question about schools, and I know we've been working on schools. That's, that's totally outside developer realm to provide schools, okay?
But he could provide, the developer can provide the space. The developer can provide space for parks. They can provide space for schools. They can provide space for commercial area. I just, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny this because I don't think it's consistent with the interests of the public, of the citizens of Claremont.
Ma'am, I think, I think we've been working with developers down there to provide space for schools and everything. I think the only thing we haven't, we had a little bit of setback with the high school, space for the high school.
If the developer wants to withdraw their application and table it for another day, that's fine. But I've made a motion, and I'd like to see if there's a second.
So I actually want to have some answers before I take interest in a second. This is certainly not my favorite development. I've voted against it.
Are you seconding it for purposes of discussion?
No, I need answers before I do that. So I voted against this multiple times. So it's certainly not my favorite development. However, I need to know from staff, did they meet the wellness way? Because we're talking about whether this is meeting their comp plan and form-based codes. And, and so that's what a lot of this, this talk is about, is whether they're doing what they were supposed to do from a wellness way, form-based code, this is it. Look, I, I just assumed that this entire development not have been done, period. But I lost that, and so here we are. So, so if you can answer that, did, did they meet their requirements, I guess?
This development, which was known as Cheyenne, they did receive a PUD approval several years ago. I don't have the date here in front of me. But as part of the review, they were held to the wellness way design standards because they were adopted by the city at that time. So what you're seeing is a plat, which is just a creation of lots. But there's also other mechanisms that doesn't come to council for approval, such as site plan approval. That includes the more details of the open space, sidewalks, right away with, stuff like that. Commercial areas. So in terms of this, this is the mechanism to create the lots. And based on the review, we were able to recommend approval of this plat because it met Florida statutes 177 for plat approval. And we, we, we subbed this out to a third-party reviewer through engineering and surveying, and they have a checklist. They go down to make sure it meets the 177 plat requirements. But, but they can't go to plating until the site plan approval is done.
Mr. Waugh, because there's development standards, all of this stuff was done in 2010. So that brings forth all of the codes, all of the, all of the standards. And I will say that I do support wellness way in general. I think it has hiccups. Are we able to deny a plat that's meeting the design standards?
Are we able to, are you able to deny a plat that does not meet?
That, that is meeting the design standards as set forth. I mean, I have a hard time saying we're not gonna approve this if it meets the design standards. I mean, they bought this land knowing the design standards. This city bent over backwards to do and give them...
I recommend against it.
Okay, that's what I mean.
And, and keep in mind, down in Wellness Way, I don't know if everybody on the council is aware of it or not, but Wellness Way has its own set of ordinance that's totally different than what we have here in the city, this city. Yes, that's another thing. When we inherited all this, they also adopted a whole new set of ordinance that's totally different than what we govern, oh, come on, by. So you have to go back and look at all this, and all the plats that are thing, and that's what I was saying earlier. All the plats and everything they bring into us met the requirement that they was given. So I, I find it hard for us to be able to say, hey, we can't deny you something based on the fact that even though you, when you met the requirements, okay?
Because doesn't that leave us open to litigation then, if we say no when we have already approved the plats before, based on the codes?
Councilmember, what I would say, just as a general matter, is everything always leaves the city open. I, I, I mean, I know it's kind of facetious. All I can say is, you know, I can give you advice, and you can feel free to take it or not. Sometimes you'll tell me to pound sand, and sometimes you'll listen. And that's okay. I, all I can do is, you know, plat approval is a special statutory creature. There's Florida statutes that talk about it. And it says, look, there's 11, 12 elements that it's gotta meet. And when it meets those elements, it's hard to get around it. So what you normally do is you try to attack the things that you're talking about, and things that the public has commented about at the PUD level, at other stages. But on this plat, I recommend against denying it.
And I, I hear what Ms. Strange is saying, but until we can go back and update our ordinance and our codes to meet what she visions and everything, we have to go about what's, what we have on the book right now, okay? And all, and all, you know, I keep hearing about Groveland Designs and everything. I mean, that's Groveland, but we have a whole set of ordinance ourselves here that we have to govern and hold our developer by. And I know pumper trucks can get in there, all these things were looked at. You took the plat, and as the gentleman stated earlier, the plat doesn't show a lot of the green space and all the other things in there. You have to go back and look at the whole, whole project, PUD and everything else. And you can see it's green spaces, everything down there. I still have a big concern in the whole area for a high school down there, because that's being, seem to be our biggest problem right now, is trying to come up with space for, what, 60, 70 acres for, for a high school, which we were working with a, one of developers that was trying to come up with a deal. And I guess that fell through a couple of months ago, which was a little disappointing after working with it for almost over a year, you know? And everything. So, but we do have space already for a charter school and elementary, is it? I can't remember. And a middle school or whatever down there. So that's already been allocated, so. Just to let you know, Ms. Strange, that we do have that space already. Developers had worked with it for that. And the school board is working with developers to try to figure out another space for, for the high school, okay?
Well, my, my concerns remain the same. I think the citizens of Claremont called us to this dais to do the right thing and to correct errors from the past. I think that we have the ability to discuss these issues with the developers. If staff didn't do that, you know, obviously, we have an issue to discuss with our city manager and our staff and make sure that they're doing that moving forward. But for the item before us, I can't in good conscience say that I'm gonna vote for something that is perpetuating sprawl on the problems that we've experienced down in Wellness Way. I think the vision for Wellness Way is remarkable, and it's supposed to be a place for people to live in a healthy lifestyle that allows for walkability and bikeability and, you know, water reclamation and enjoyment of nature. And this plat does not do that. I cannot support it. My motion remains the same. I move to deny because I do not believe it's in the best interest of the citizens of Claremont.
I have a motion for deny. Did I get a, I don't think I heard a second. No second. Motion, motion failed. Is there another motion?
Could I just say a quick question? Something was cited about Section 10, 1 dot, 1 dot, 1. So does this qualify for that when, in the initial plat plan? Or, or is that not? Is that like something new? Like this was like five years ago, 10 years ago, this was approved?
This always took place way back in '08.
So does, so does the new ordinance then supersede that, or they go under the old thing then? You know what I'm asking?
I, I don't think I do. I'm sorry.
I mean, if there's, let's say there's a thousand persons, you need 10 acres of, of, of open space. If this doesn't qualify to that, does that then negate it? Or is it still covered under the old?
Are you asking whether this has to be consistent with a comprehensive plan?
Yes.
I think so.
Yes.
So, Bill, so what they, when they developed Wellness Way? So when they developed Wellness Way, they developed their own set of form-based codes. They developed their own plan. As long as this meets that plan, it's, which it does, it's, so there will be another one tonight that doesn't meet the Wellness Way codes, but it's in Wellness Way. It's non-conforming. So those are a little bit more difficult. But this one, if it meets it, I mean, they have development rights. And it's not something that we, as a city, did. This was done in 2010 by the county in an effort to stop exactly what Ms. Strange is talking about, sprawl. Is it gonna completely? No. But in the general idea of things, it is a good idea. We don't necessarily get to decide how that goes. Many times, this is done through the county and then handed to us. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that we get that way, but if they're, you know, I'm not looking at the development codes and going through this to do it. We're going on the recommendation of staff. And they're telling us that they met the design codes and that it meets the development requirements. I have a hard time saying no.
Within, within the codes, there is so much requirement for green space, so much for this. I mean, that's all in there. So when it came back for approval, I'm quite sure staff went through and say, hey, you meet this, you meet that and everything. So before they make, make a recommendation, yes. This that the gentleman presented us with tonight doesn't show all that, see? All the green space and everything else that's been built into this, okay? And I'm, I'm with Mr. Howard. I wasn't too particularly crazy about this, what went on in Wellness Way. It's not what I wanted to see down there anyway. But at the same time, it was handed to us, so we're trying to deal with it the best way we can, okay?
What is this gonna do to the emergency response times? We have an effort by this council to have a six-minute response time. Has that been taken into consideration? Because when this was done, we were on track to a 15-minute response time to Wellness Way. Has that been considered? Because if we can't provide the infrastructure response consistent with the standards that we've adopted as a council, then that gives us grounds to deny this.
So I would argue that on the plating, probably not. They can move forward with the plating. We can always say that we can't do it once we get to the build time and time to collect impact fees and all of that stuff. But I would have a harder time with that. Rick, or excuse me, Mr. Van Wagner, would you be able to send, I'm going to guess that some on the council have never seen the Wellness Way design standards. It's been a while since I read them. Bill, you will really enjoy it. You'll sleep well. But it's been a long time since I have read them. But it's been a long time since I have read them. But it does give us, especially with as much as we have going on in Wellness Way, you know, it's a lot to absorb. And there's pieces and parts that I retain better because I'm passionate about it. And then there's other parts, I'm like, "Ah, I forgot about that." And, and I think that's where Allison's coming from is that Ms. Strange has a lot of the, the parks and the walkability. And in my mind, that was all supposed to be built in. And so, you know, I think it'd be a good refresher course for all of us to, to be up on this. If you could find it, because I know it's hard to find and...
Well, we've got the wellness concerns. We've got the public safety concerns on the response time. I mean, are we dealing with water issues here? I haven't heard anything tonight saying that this meets the current standards. We're dealing with a 15-year-old design that was approved 15 years ago. It wasn't built. We haven't been collecting the taxes and impact fees and all that time. And now, we sit here in 2025 with water issues that we're having to tap into the aquifer. And we've got wellness concerns with 15-minute response times right now. We're trying to get them down to six. Can this project meet those new standards for 2025? And if not, I think we have grounds to deny it, folks. I am not hearing any of you saying you like this project the way it's designed. I'm hearing you say you think that you're trapped and I'm trying to find it out for you. And I think we have it in the wellness, the health and wellness and the well-being of the citizens. And I think this developer can do better. And I'd love to work with them and see them bring back something that is better for the citizens of Claremont.
Ms. Strange, I, I understand that and I'm in total agreement with you, in agreement with you for walkability and everything. I'm a strong believer in, in the new Strong Towns concept. But right now, we do not have those mechanisms in place.
But we don't have an extra response time either.
This was approved some years ago. And, and, but I don't think we have the right to go back now and try to change everything in the middle of the stream. For us, that go if we change our ordinance tomorrow to, to include Strong Town concepts and everything? Do we go back and make all the...
This isn't Strong Town, sir. We, we're trying to, we're spending millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars to try to build fire stations that give our citizens a chance at life if they have a medical emergency. I'm talking about our fire shocks being able to respond in a timely manner. We're, we're bringing ambulances to Claremont. I mean, that has been a major initiative of this council. They must meet our current standards of those, on those issues, and we can deny on that. I'm a little surprised candidly. And, and frankly, I don't want to beat a dead horse here. If it's a four-to-one vote, then let's make the vote and move on. But I'm thinking some of you want to deny this. And I'm trying to give you the basis that you need because I do think it's not good for the citizens. And from a general health and wellness and safety concern, I think that's a basis to deny it. So, if I need to make the motion again, I'll do it. But otherwise, if someone would make a motion, I'd like to move on.
I'm going to make a motion. Alice, I appreciate what you're saying, but I also have our city attorney saying that he would recommend us not go in that direction. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve item number two plat approval.
Aren't we still discussing or?
No, no, he just made a motion.
He just made a motion. And do I have a second for approval of item number two?
A second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for approval of item number two plat approval. Any further discussion?
I mean, what, without, what Ms. Strange is, is saying is, is response time something that we, if it's not within a certain framework, like an eight-minute response time, does that cause us to create a denial?
My concern is that that's not a plat approval discussion.
Okay, so it goes to what?
That would be...
Mr. Waugh?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, is an emergency response time or for there to meet the current standards of this council of a six-minute response time, is that a basis for denial at this point?
Not in chapter 119 of your city code, which lists the standards for approving a plat. So, if you did want to consider that, it's something that you could amend. So, for example, when you do a rezoning, when you do a, a PUD approval, there's all kinds of factors that you're allowed to consider. I mean, not every factor, but there's all thing, all kinds of things you can consider. With a plat approval, it's, it's based on your code, chapter 119, as far as I'm reading it. It's essentially administrative. And it's a little bit of a straitjacket. I think you can change that, but that's the way it reads to me.
We, we can change the code?
Yes, sir.
But right now, we have to buy, buy the code.
That's why I'm giving you the advice I'm giving, for better or for worse.
Okay.
And, and there is no evidence on the record about the response times.
Right. But it could be denied, this has to be approved, but it could be denied at a later time. At, at the next stage, if it doesn't qualify for those things.
If, if you had amended, if, if you, I mean, technically, if you amended your code and tabled it till that time, it's possible. But it's not possible today.
Just if I could add one thing.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner, you and I were having this discussion ironically last meeting. We just received a check for $435,000 from Pulte between the meetings. There was a previous agreement that was made that that money was going to go towards the fire station. So, I'm not an attorney and I look to Mr. Waugh, but it looks to me like we have some agreements in place. Therefore, it looked administrative to us as the staff that whether we agreed or not, it was already in place.
It was already, it was already in place. And that's one of the reasons, like you said last, we had the discussion about the millions of dollars. And that was the whole thing about this plat is adding extra homes to help pay for the fire station bill.
I'd like to call for a vote then on that.
Okay. No, we had a motion and a second in for approval, item number two. Item number two, any, no further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And the chair vote as well. Motion moved, passes four to one. Item number three, Ms. Strange.
Same concerns, same motion.
Anyone in the public wish to address item number three? Wellness, what is it? Yes.
John Tadona, 3611 Briar Run Drive. So, item number three is another example. Sorry, but it's just my opinion. Between section 10, 1.1.1, 181 residential lots, four people per home, it's another 724 people. There's no way of knowing, and I thank you for the education, that there are more diagrams out there. But there's no way in knowing that there is 7.25 acres of open space. Same thing, nobody is walking in a stormwater drain or a retention pond. Will there be any kind of trail, rest area, benches? Will it be lit? Will it be a gazebo? Can we put a pumper truck down there? Can you save my mom from having a heart attack? And honestly, I'm, I'm only here seven and a half years. But, and it, it's, it's a shame that if I was here 27 and a half years, I could have proposed something like this. Or 10 years ago. You all mentioned 10 years ago. It's a shame that if I was a developer and proposed this 10 years ago and it was approved based on those codes. And now, 10 years later, with the amount of traffic and overpopulation in Claremont, where Claremont is getting slaughtered, that we're going to allow, and you have no mechanism to take care of this, but we're going to allow an extra 1,800 people, call it 2,000 residents, 4,000 cars on roads that cannot handle this traffic. And I understand, I don't understand the law, that's what you're here for. But you can't tell me that there's not some sort of emergency thing that you could pull out of a hat that says 10 years ago, this looked viable. 10 years later, this cannot be done. So, I have handouts and I, I, as I said, I appreciate the education that you're going to tell me I don't have all the information. But you can't tell me that the four things that I have marked as size equals seven and a quarter acres. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tadona.
Yes, ma'am.
Charlene Harrison, 4th DeSoto Street, Claremont. And I hope the people sitting in this audience, there's what a citizen that is sitting there volunteering, no paycheck on the planning and zoning. And look what he's got for y'all. Look what he's done. And Kurt, you and John in the back need to be very afraid of him and several on that planning and zoning because they're busting this stuff wide open. And he's right. What happened 10 years ago, you can't do. And I am really beside myself to see that everybody thinks, dangle a shiny $430,000 check just because you put it to a fire department. That ain't going to fix the schools and all the stuff, is it? What good is the fire department if you can't fix the rest of it? I know, I know, you're seeing, Bill, you're shaking your head. Y'all need to wake up. And this is what they were doing in the old days, trying to do that and dangle that in front of you and let's give it. And then, we've got hell all around this town that'll never be fixed in a million years. Never, never. I just wanted to say it on the record. Thank you, Mr. Tadona, for doing the job that the city should be doing and busting this wide open. I know you're credentialed. He's gone back into college getting more stuff. I don't know if it's an MBA or masters, whatever he's doing. But y'all need to pay attention to this gentleman and what he's giving you. Study and listen and learn.
Yes, sir.
It's anemic Regency Hills. I'm here to speak on myself, myself only, as a citizen of Claremont. Let's get that straight. I'd like to ask the council, I'm not beating nobody up. Did any of you guys really go to this area? Really? Have you been there lately? I have. Just out of my curiosity, okay? Now, let's just say we got all this money, which in New York, we call it a bribe, okay? But I'm just going to call it as it is to make it seem like, "Oh, we gave you money." Okay, you accepted it. So, now you guys put yourself in a bind, okay? But let's just say like the high school that's not being built, because I know the mayor's upset about it and I'm upset about it too. That was why that developer got permission, because he said, "Oh, we're going to put a school here, we're going to do this there." And guess what? It's not there. Where's the roads he promised that he's getting $12 million to put to connect Hancock? It's not there. We're all getting upset. Like Mr. Tadona said, 10 years ago, it would look feasible. But if you go to that section now, go there now, I, I, I highly advise you, you'd be amazed. The road goes on forever and ever. You look right, you see nothing but homes being built. You look left, you see trees being chopped down, farms being taken out, all right? This ain't Claremont no more. You're not, not the council, but it's not what we moved here for, okay? I'm tired of developers coming in, doing what they want, leaving us with the mess, just like the county. And your honor, me and you fought on the same side in this one. The county approves things and we have no choice to annex it. I am very impressed with Councilman Strange. For once, somebody just came up there and said, "What about the response time? What about the response time? If that firehouse don't get built, you got the fire chief right there. He'll tell you right now how hard it is to get down there, all the way down there and keep going." I believe they were quarter a mile away from 429. That's how far it goes. So, this Wellness Way is not really a good thing. I don't care what you think up there. To us citizens of Claremont, it's not. Okay, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Cindy Doyle, 1020 West Minnehaha Avenue, Claremont, Florida. Recently, I was at a meeting and one of you were at that meeting. And you were talking about the traffic here and how the reason why we all have such bad traffic is the timing of the red lights. That's bull. That's total bull. We have the traffic because your growth has not been responsible growth. You know, if you're going to grow a city and grow a town, you grow it and you grow it in increments. And you make sure that the traffic equals the growth. And what you're doing here on all of these right now is you're adding more problem. You're more, more fuel to our fire of traffic. And you showing irresponsibility, all of you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lane Register. I'm with Lenore Holmes. So, just wanted to touch on, I'm going to kind of more or less echo everything the gentleman from Pulte said. So, a couple of things that I was furiously researching in the back over the past 20 minutes or so. So, RPD was approved late 2019. It's actually approved 11/19/2019, so five and a half years ago. This plat, you know, again, kind of echoing the gentleman from Pulte. Our plat's consistent with that PD, that subsequent PSP approval and with our site engineering plans that have been approved by staff. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions about the plat itself. But we believe, you know, based on, you know, our consultants, our surveyor, our engineer, that this plat is consistent with, you know, chapter 177 and with our development approvals.
Thank you, sir.
Jenny Mae, 4062 Greystone Drive. A question to the attorney. Mr. Waugh, is there an expiration date on plats? I mean, if it was approved back in 2010 and now it's 2025, that's 10. That was for the previous, he's saying five and a half. But usually, isn't there a timeframe that there has to be a plat that has to be approved within a timeframe? I'm not sure about Florida.
Well, I, I didn't hear what the, are you saying that someone said the expiration date was five and a half years?
Well, somebody had said that this was planned out.
She asking, is there expiration date on, on a plat?
Well, I, I'm not aware of an expiration date on this plat.
Is there an expiration date within city code, county, state? So, I mean, if they've been working on this plat, somebody said up here that it's been going on since 2010, I think, Mr. Howard. Maybe I got that confused.
Let me clarify. So, Wellness Way was created in 2010. This was approved in 2019. I can tell you that I spoke against it then. However, it was annexed, it was annexed as a non-conforming property. There's all kinds of issues with this. It's not my favorite thing. What you have seen, and it's something that I implemented, was expiration of PUDs. I was not here at this time. I spoke publicly against what they were doing, how they were doing, that it didn't conform to Wellness Way. So, this one does not conform to Wellness Way. It doesn't give us the water, it doesn't give us the walkability, it doesn't give us the town center. It doesn't do any of that. So, you know, when somebody says we're not doing what Wellness Way should be, 100%. Because they had development rights from the county. This was handed to us. So, you know, I don't want, I agree. But I also know that I have a legal, I have a legal responsibility to the city not to put us into litigation for the sake of putting us in litigation.
Right, but we're also creating more traffic and response time.
We have a great lawyer and we have access to other great lawyers. Let's just do the right thing for the citizens and fix what, what's in front of us. I mean, I, I'm really imploring you to just not continue to make our transportation problems worse. The schools, the roads, the, you know, walkability, transportation, jobs. I mean, this whole region, we don't have Hancock Park coming down there yet. I mean, Hancock Road coming down there. I mean, there's so many problems with just adding over 500 homes to the Wellness Way area in this suburban sprawl design. And I just, I can't get behind it. And I think we all feel like it's something that's old, that was sprung upon us. But together, I mean, I have confidence in our attorney, I have confidence in Mr. Van Wagner. I think we can figure it out. And I just think today is the first step towards that, which is denial.
Well, I, I, I don't want to...
Sorry, public comment's still going. I shouldn't, I'm sorry. I was out of line, I apologize.
No, you're okay. I, I'm, I'm in agreement with, I'm not ready to put the city in jeopardy of a lawsuit or whatever if we, we try to deny this based upon what was actually approved based upon the codes that's in place right now, okay? Again, I did not like the project when it first started. And, you know, it's strange, this whole thing started way back in 2008, 2009 and started getting approved in 2010. And people up on the council at that time had opportunity to change all that. But here it is before us now. And you ask us to go back and do something that I guess they saw fit was okay at that time. And I hear a problem with the traffic and, you know... And I hear the problem with the traffic, and, you know, I'm very concerned with the traffic, but those 800 homes or 900 homes down there, I'm not as much concerned with them as I am the fact that right next door in Groveland, they got 22,000 homes approved. And where you think that traffic coming? What's going on in Mineola? See, you know, and all this traffic. They concern me more of all that additional traffic that's gonna be flowing through Claremont. As I said in the other day, yes, we have a lot of traffic here, but a lot of it isn't Claremont traffic. It's coming through the city from all over. And I cannot stop that. We cannot stop that.
But we can put solutions in place to attract jobs and help our citizens not have to get on those roads, because those aren't our roads. Those are state roads and US roads. And what we need to be doing in Claremont is having citizens of Claremont having job opportunities, walking opportunities, biking opportunities. Don't forget the water issues that we're dealing with. I mean, this is just a mess, and we can continue to say, well, we didn't make the mess, but at some point, we all ran because we thought we could clean it up. And this is an opportunity for us to clean it up. And it may not be pretty, and it may result in lawsuits, I understand that, but I think that we have really competent counselors and negotiators in our staff, and if this developer chooses to sue, then, you know, we've got time to have those conversations. But I just can't personally look at the people who voted for me and say, I just approved this, and it's ugly, and it's not my fault, and pawn it off on the people who came before me, because they're not here, we're here. And so, is public comment closed? Can I make a motion?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Strange, I just wanted to add one thing. It sounds like you guys are mainly afraid of upsetting the developers and causing any lawsuits, but maybe if we're the first city or one of the first cities in Florida that actually stands against all the developers, maybe that can start like a chain reaction and make Groveland and other cities act as well, because it sounds like you're just tied, your hands are tied. They already made it 10 years ago, five years ago, six years ago. You're just gonna continue it, but maybe if you actually make a difference, mayor and council members, and actually say, you know what, let's not be like every other city. Let's actually care about our city and the citizens, maybe it can start a trend or something.
I appreciate, yes, that's good.
Paula Hoyzington, 564 East of Soder Street.
Oh, boy. Earlier, Ms. Charling asked about how things get on the consent agenda. And I didn't really get clarity on how that's done. But on here, it says, "non-controversial and routine." We spent how much time talking about these two issues? So my question is, like, when issues like this come along, whomever is responsible for determining if it goes on the consent agenda, do you not look at all of the issues? If we knew that this was approved 10 years ago, and it has been said, 10 years ago does not look like 2025. The time when it was approved, yes, maybe it met the requirements, but as we continue to be the city of champions and continue to grow and build, how do we now continue to go on? I totally agree with Councilwoman Strange. At some point, we have to stand up and fight for ourselves and not just say, well, it was approved 10 years ago, and there's nothing we can do. People are gonna sue regardless of what you do. But for us to just hide behind that and say, we don't want to put the city in litigation, but yet we will put the citizens in danger if we can't get rescue squads there to take care of the issues, if we can't have proper schools, roads, and everything that we have a desire for Claremont. At what point do you stand up and say, I'm going to stand up for the people who put me in office? Surely, we should be able to find a way to get around this to where it meets the standards of today and not fall back on the excuse that it was approved 10 years ago. There were other things that may have been approved 10 years ago, but that doesn't mean that it fits what's going on today in the direction in which we want to take the city. I'm just really having a hard time while we have spent, what, over an hour talking about something that was put on the consent calendar, agenda, who we knew that it was not an easy thing to discuss. You owe it to the citizens to discuss those issues that's going to impact us every day. And we ask that you stand up. Stand up and do the right thing. I don't know how many times she has to say it over and over. This does not work for us now. So what are we going to do about it as a council? How are you going to be able to look the constituents in the eye and say, well, they approved it 10 years ago, I wasn't here? But you're here now, and you have a responsibility, and we just ask that you please look at how it impacts us today and rule on how we will move forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sin Doyle, 1020 West...
Ma'am, I think you've spoken once already on this issue.
You're only allowed once?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
Oh, I don't want to get in the way of more public comments.
Come on, yes, come on. Yes, sir.
Patrick Bianchi, A10 West Montrose Street. It's interesting, because I am a developer, so I'm gonna speak out both sides of my mouth, but you're lucky enough as a city council, and I think I was very vocal about this, when you hired him, you have what I call an "oh crap" lawyer. When another lawyer sees Christian Waugh's name on a piece of paper on the other side, they say, oh crap. He is very capable, he's talented, he's very smart. He will find a way to defend the city in the best interest of the city. If it was anybody else, like the previous one, I'd say, approve this thing. I am a developer, so I understand Burt Hare's claims. I understand property rights. I have my own properties, so I have to weigh that and balance that. But Allison Strange, Councilwoman Allison Strange is right. I've lived here since 2004. It has changed dramatically. I would encourage this city council to have sunset laws within your ordinances that says if you don't develop within a certain amount of time, five years, it goes away so that we don't have to have the 20-year discussion and say, hey, I approved 20 years ago, and now I'm coming to make good on the entitlements today. I would strongly consider this, because then things like this will not happen. Groveland started to do it. I live in the city of Groveland, and they've had, to the mayor's point, all these homes coming out of the woodworks, being approved, that were decades ago because they didn't have the sunset in place. Now they do. Something to consider. Thank you.
Well, anyone else? Anyone else? No one else, I'm closing a public comment. Let me say this. If I'm mistaken, this is phase four, right? This is phase four, which means they've been developing down there, and it's just another phase of the whole project, right?
That is correct. I went back and looked.
This is an opportunity for them to finish it in the way that Wellness Way was envisioned in the beginning. So they've already built all these homes, and now it's a chance to make it the community that Wellness Way was envisioned to be. I'm gonna move to deny this in the interest of public infrastructure, health, and wellness.
Yes, please.
To answer your question, yes, I went back and looked. We've had Phase 1, which was, the plat was done June 27, 2023, consent. Phase 1A, August 9, 2022. Phase 2, June 11, 2024. I was looking up Phase 3 before I got called up here. So there is a pattern where they've come back through consent, because the mayor has to sign it, so does the city clerk's office. You know, in the future, we'll put plats on regular agenda, but historically, it's been consent agenda, and if you go back and look at those hearings, they haven't been pulled off or discussed. But to answer your question, this has been ongoing for several years, and the PUD was approved in 2019, and the Wellness Way design standards were adopted in 2022. Looking through the PUD, there are some conditions in there that talk about open space, which meets that requirement of, under policy, Section 6.1 in the PUD talks about the open space requirement that matches our complaint. And then also, there's other things in the PUD, such as 6.5, that talks about ped bicycle connections to park or amenities. So if you take time to look at the PUD, there's some stuff in there that some of these comments are being brought forward as. It's just, you know, it's not in the plat. The plat is just the width, the depth, the roads, and that's all you see on the plats.
And that was my point earlier, is the fact that what we've seen before on the plat doesn't have all the detail for your green space and all that. When I looked at it, when it came to me before, we looked at all the green spaces, it met the requirements at the time. And I totally agree, and I think I've said this before, I wasn't too particularly happy with Wellness Way. I thought it should've been an industrial park to bring better-paying jobs into Claremont and help eliminate some of that, but I didn't have much say-so and all that when it was all being approved and developed along the way. So when I got here, and I just have to deal with what they've given us and all, and I'm not happy, I don't like the fact that we have two separate sets of ordinance we have to deal with, separate set down there from what we deal with here, you know, we have to apply down there. But that's what we were given to. My thing is, hey, if we want to change the way we want Claremont to go in the future, let's sit down in the end and get serious and change the codes, okay? That's what we need to do. I'm not really to sit here and just deliberately send the city in an opportunity to be sued because I don't like our code right now. They've changed over the years, and our desire has changed over the years. I'm just not willing to do that. That's not being physically responsible at all, which I also voted, the fact is, I will be physically responsible up here on this dais, okay?
I agree with you, sir, and I don't want to jump over dollars.
And I don't doubt Mr. Waugh is an outstanding lawyer, but guess what? They have lawyers, too, you know? And I guarantee, they probably have got a bigger pool of lawyers than we have, okay?
But we may have a short-term pain to have a long-term benefit. So if it wasn't clear, I said, I'm going to make a motion, now I'm making a motion to deny item number three in the interest of public infrastructure, health, and welfare.
I have a motion for denial of, what's that, item number three? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion and a second to deny item number three. Any further discussion?
All the question.
Hold on. I can't speak?
Go ahead.
No, make your vote. Make your vote.
No, no, we'll make the vote. No, let Allison have her way.
No, like I said, is there any further discussion?
No, I'm good. She wants to vote, call the roll.
Go on.
No further discussion, then all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, nay.
I mean, nay.
Now, back to what I was gonna say.
Motion fails two to three.
With this...
Do we, Mr.?
We're still in discussion, so I mean, we can go...
No, we were taking the motion, it's passed and everything.
So it failed, so we can continue. The motion failed. Allison's motion failed.
Failed, yes. Okay.
So, back to Wellness Ridge. We're in the fourth plat on this. I get that people don't like it. I am the one who has been asking for sunsets on every single PUD. And the way that we combat this moving forward is to have a JPA that's in our favor. We can have discussions about things that have already passed, but at the end of the day, they've got those rights. Moving forward, we need a JPA that favors Claremont, because even if we said no and we deannex this, the county can still move forward with it. The county can still move forward with all of Wellness Way without us having a single word to say about it. So the way that we fix these things is to be strong in our JPA, which is our joint planning agreement, with the county. The county has higher density allowances than the city does. This is how we inherit things that we don't like. And until we have a JPA that says, if this is in our inter-local service boundary and you're going to abide by our codes, that's how we combat this, that's how we fix this. And I'm not going to, people can be mad at me, they can yell at me, they can say whatever they want. At the end of the day, our attorney, who I do trust, who I do think people look at and go, okay, it's Christian Waugh. Christian Waugh is telling me that it's his advice not to vote against this. And I'm also telling this council, and I've strenuously done this for the past year that I've been elected, that we need our JPA fixed, and I will continue to ask for sunsets on every single PUD and CUP that comes before us. But, you know, Rick can give us an update on that, but at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to approve item number three, plat approval for Wellness Ridge, Phase 4.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval of item number three plat approval. Any further discussion?
No.
Here none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And the chair votes aye as well. Motion passes three to two, okay?
So Todd, what you were saying about the JPA, what exactly do we need to do to get that going?
Well, we have, Mr. Van Wagner, don't we have a meeting scheduled for the JPA to discuss JPA?
Yes, sir. And since the council has asked us to work on, we've had two meetings about the JPA. We've expressed our great concern with them having one set of rules and then us having a different set of rules. Dan was on that discussion on Monday. He could give you more details. And you're gonna, in my report, Mr. Mayor, today, I'm gonna bring up another project that the county is asking for one thing that changes, that's different from our code. So this is something, and I've had conversations with the county manager, with her assistant, with Sean Parks. I've let multiple council members or commissioners know, this is becoming a great issue for us that must be resolved.
And it's always been an issue because the county has control, and as Mr. Howard said before, their ordinance had caused for more density than our ordinance, okay? Of course, when we turn some projects down, they just go to the county and get what they want anyway, and then it's forced on us anyway. Kirk, answer this one question, I keep hearing this about sunset. Isn't just about every time we approve something, we have somewhat of a sunset in there, they have two, three years to begin the project?
We have been doing that lately. It hasn't been consistent in the past, though.
I know, I thought we started doing that, okay? So, yeah, we put this in, I don't think this had one built in. Of course, like I say, it was all approved long before us, but a couple of years ago, we started trying to make sure that they had, just about everything we approved had a sunset, okay? And all, and I think it's either two to three years or something like this.
Conditional use permits have two years. That's in the code, but a PUD is a zoning, typically, that just stays with land unless that condition's put in there.
But we do have a JPA meeting, I can't remember the date that we scheduled to do, is it July?
We do have a meeting in July.
June 30, is it?
Let me look here.
I think, I can't remember. We just got it all scheduled.
Yeah, it's 1:00 PM on June 30 is the next discussion.
Yeah, okay. So, okay, that's, we up to unfinished business, wow. I know you all may not like this, but Kirk, I hear you. I'm gonna give you all a 10-minute break.
I'd appreciate that myself. Thank you.
I do need to, I do need to share with you that I have a 6:30 stop. I have three and a half hours for this meeting, so if you need votes from me, I just want to make you aware that I have a 6:30.
Anything, we will talk to people after that, but right now, I have 5:45, so 5:55 we come back. I hear you, sir. Thank you. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. We're gonna take a 10-minute break. What?
I'm thirsty.
Administrative Correction of Scrivener's Error, Recording, Publication and Effective Date.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Now.
Thank you, Nicole. Sorry about that. The applicant, Brian Hess, is requesting the vacation of a portion of Short Street Right-Away. The right-of-way is located north of State Road 50 and east of 12th Street, which is what you see highlighted on your screen. Just to the left there is 12th Street. And the red area represents the Short Street area. The portion of Short Street in question is no longer necessary for public access or circulation as the surrounding parcels have been reconfigured and redeveloped over the years. Carroll Street is being aligned as part of the community benefit agreement with the Lumberyard Project, and this will be, this will provide an improved east-west connection from 12th Street, which is just to the southern part of that red line there. The vacation request is only along the applicant's property and does not affect access to the applicant's, to the adjacent properties and does not impact public access or services. As part of the vacation request, Public Services is requesting a utility easement to ensure access to the current utilities that serve the applicant's property. Staff recommends approval of vacating a portion of Short Street Right-Away as outlined in Ordinance 2025-016, along with the utility easement in your supplemental folder. And that's staff's report.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Brian Hess. Do you have any questions?
No, I just, did you have anything you want to add?
I would like you to bless us. This is a good thing.
Okay. Well, if we have any other question, we will call you back up later. Right now, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone, state your name and address, and have three minutes. Seeing no one, I close public comment and bring it back to council. What say council?
Kurt, can you back up that screen? And just because we're dealing with this right now, obviously that road comes in off of 12th Street.
12th Street, yeah.
And there's additional right-of-way there. Would it be wise to go ahead and vacate that as well? Just contact them and see if we can split it or...
Are you referring to the area?
To the west.
Right, right here?
Yeah.
We absolutely have discussed that with them, with the other applicants. There was, they did not want to at this time.
Okay. It was just one of those that, it's just more land we're going to be taking care of for no reason.
We did follow that idea ourselves, and they did not, one of them, actually both of them wanted for access, and they did not want to close it yet.
Perfect.
Did they give you a reason?
We have two different homes in there on both sides, home on both sides of that, right? The street.
There's more of a business to the southern, both sides, the north and the south of that portion is a business.
Okay.
Yeah, surprised Mr. Bishop wouldn't want that, because I know that's who owns that other one.
Part of it has to do with the alignment, the actual asphalt is skewed to one side. So if it's split, the southern property owner doesn't get actual asphalt to get to his property.
Right. Oh, he doesn't have an entrance from front. I got you.
Yeah, that's the biggest reason, yeah.
Ms. Strange, I think I heard you trying to say something?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Was there a reason that they, I think he answered the question, that the way the asphalt was constructed? Just wondering why someone wouldn't want to vacate the road.
That was it, Ms. Strange. That's exactly what the issue was.
It's okay. Well, you don't have to, if they vacate, of course, we still responsible for their road, right?
So, Allison, you can't see, she's not able to see this. So, that road comes in, and his driveway is actually on the backside of his property. So, that road comes in past his property, and he enters his property from the backside. That's why they want to not split it. You want me to turn so you can see it?
You mean the, the neighbor, or that's what the applicant wants?
Yeah, I know that's the neighbor here. Can you see it?
No.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm just surprised that they wouldn't...
They come in right here, and go over there.
So, they basically want to be able to drive on the other piece of the property. I see.
That's correct, right. Your neighbor would have to be driving on the other neighbor's property to get to theirs, yes.
Yeah. Now, my concern here, Kurt, I think I read it in there. I want to make sure we would still have a right-of-way there, right? For utilities easement?
It's an easement we are requesting.
So we can...
And the applicant has agreed...
We still have easement for our utilities.
Yes, the applicant has agreed to do that, yes.
Because I see it say utility easement will be needed as part of this approval. So has he, he agreed to that already?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve item number seven, ordinance number 2025-016, final vacated right-of-way on Short Street.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second for approval, item number...
Seven.
Seven. Ordinance number 2025-016. Any further discussion?
No.
Here none, I know. Let me ask Councilmember Strange, roll call.
Does she hear you?
Nay.
Nay? Councilmember Howard?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
And the chair of all as well. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Item number eight is for final consideration, ordinance number 2025-023.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, closing and permanently abandoning property as described in deed book 357, page 17, and deed book 357, page 18, public records of Lake County, Florida, and physically located on Wellness Way within the city of Claremont, and more particularly described as below, providing for conflict, severability, administrative correction of Scrivener's error, recording, publication and effective date.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Yes, John Cruz, again Development Services. The applicant, LSMA Wellness, is requesting the vacation of a segment of a public right-of-way located within the pending Wellness Ridge Phase Four plat. The subject right-of-way is situated north and south of Wellness Way and east of US 27 in proximity to the existing and future residential areas being developed as part of the overall Wellness Ridge Plan Unit Development. And on the screen, outlined is the 30-foot width that was deded in 1954 to Lake County. It was never acted upon by Lake County, and it was never improved. The right-of-way was transferred to the city through a road transfer agreement. The right-of-way needs to be vacated in order for the Wellness Ridge Phase Four plat to be recorded. The proposed vacation will not impact public access or infrastructure needs, and staff recommends approval, ordinance 2025-023. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, is the applicant present?
Hey, good evening again. Lane Register Lenar Holmes, 6675 Westwood Boulevard, Orlando. I guess I'm just up here to say what the previous gentleman said before me each time, apparently. But, yeah, just asking y'all to approve this right-of-way vacation. Technically speaking, I think, I think John said that it needed to be vacated to record the plat. Not technically true. It just cleans up some underlying title stuff here. Any questions? Happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. If we have any question, we'll call you back up at a later time. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone, state your name and address, and have three minutes. Seeing no one, I close public comment and bring it back to council. What say council?
I have a question for our attorney. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I can.
Something changed in the way the screen was. Mr. Wall, what are the standards for approval or denial of a vacation of a public right-of-way?
Essentially, it's if you make a finding that it's in the public interest, then you can do it. If you don't think it's in the public interest, I mean, there may be a grounds to deny it.
Okay. And gentlemen, I appreciate your help. But so, you know, I'm watching on YouTube as well. And for the folks who are in the audience, our staff's doing a really incredible job with this YouTube presentation. So I can actually see the screen as a sub-box of my YouTube presentation. So I'm able to keep up that way. It's really awesome, actually. Folks, I'm concerned with just giving land to private property owners that belongs to the public. You know, when you do a plan for a property and you put roads in, those roads are there for a reason. And I don't think that just giving away land to private property owners is a habit we need to be doing. And so personally, I'm opposed to this, as I was the last one. And given all the reasons that we discussed earlier about the infrastructure and the status down in Wellness Way, I'm going to move for denial of item number eight, as I believe it's against the public interest.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Here no second, motion dies. entertain another motion.
Motion to approve item number eight, ordinance number 2025-023, final vacation of right-of-way in the Wellness Way Phase Four plat.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of item number eight, ordinance number 2025-023. Any further discussion? Here none. Roll call. Councilmember Strange?
Nay.
Councilmember Howard?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
And the chair of all as well. Motion passes four to one. Item number nine is for final consideration, ordinance number 2025-019.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for the annexation of a certain parcel of land in accordance with the inter-local service boundary agreement dated December 2nd, 2014, providing for conflict, severability, administrative correction of Scrivener's error, recording, publication and an effective date.
Again, this annexation is known as the Ivy Ridge Annexation. And just note that the city is the applicant here. The city is requesting annexation of the subject parcel as authorized by the utility agreement with the property owner through the notice of encumbrance to annex provision. The agreement with the city was executed on November 8th of 2022. The property is being developed and will be receiving wastewater services from the city. The property, approximately 60.51 acres, was approved for 155 residential, single-family dwelling units in the Lake County PUD. The annexation is being requested in order to allow the building permits to be issued by the city of Claremont. The related request for a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request will come at a later date and will be very similar to what has been approved in Lake County. The current zoning is PUD, and the future, and the current future lane use is urban low-density in Lake County. In order to expedite the process, staff recommends approval of annexation 2025-019. I may have skipped over where that was located. I'm sorry. I do apologize. That's just to the south of Hammock Ridge Road that you see highlighted in front of you there. That represents the 155 units going over to the Lake Luisa area. Again, that is Hammock Ridge Road, just to the north of the project.
Hammock Ridge, and it backs, swing around behind Hammond Point, is it?
Uh, yeah, well, okay, Hammock Ridge goes just to the, if you can see the cursor.
Right.
The Lake Shore Drive just starts just up the north side here. This way would go out to Highway 27.
Highway 27.
That's right. Yeah, Fox Chase Development is this highlighted area here.
Which is already, which is already in the city.
It's already in the city. That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. It's on us. Thank you. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Ma'am, I think you was interested in this earlier. Okay.
Devon Marie and I live in Mandarin Drive, right next to that in Claremont. So the reason why I'm against the overall annexation and just the site in question is because I actually have seen a lot of endangered species in the area. I've seen a lot of them crossing the street to escape the development and being hit by cars on Lake Luisa Road. I'm very concerned about the gopher turtles. Those are the ones that I did see, and the indigo snakes. All of these animals are also coming onto the oranges where I live because of the proximity and being pushed out with all the changes and all the construction. So I'm very, you know, concerned about that as well as the traffic, just because Lake Luisa Road is one road. A lot of our houses on that, that's our only way of coming in and out. And with this, it's just going to add even more traffic, and honestly, just a gridlock. And when they were developing the front end of this, the developers or the team in question were kind of creating their own traffic, kind of stopping cars, letting them go. And they were doing this incorrectly. And we actually saw two car accidents happen because of this. So I just wanted the council members to just keep an eye on this property itself and just see if we can do anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I close public comment and bring it back to council. What say council?
So I'll address kind of the question. The problem is, is that if we don't annex it, they still build it. So it doesn't matter, this, this is getting built, one way or another, whether it's in Claremont or whether it's not. Makes zero difference. What it does change is whether we're able to collect the impact fees in order to pay for the fire service that we're absolutely going to be giving these folks, along with police, and along with arts and rec, and parks, and all of the other pieces and parts that go with it. Or we can allow county to take it, and then we'll get to run those fire anyway, and we'll get to subsidize the county, which is what's going on in large part throughout Claremont, when we don't annex pieces that are within our ISBA. And that's inter-local service boundary agreement. So we have to supply the water, we have to supply the sewer, and because of our proximity, we're going to end up supplying fire as well. And if we choose not to, then we're just giving all of the impact fees to the county, and they're not going to do anything for us. They're not going to help us. They're just going to be like, okay, well, you're still closest. You still go. So, you know, it's unfortunate, but this is where we're at.
Yep. You're right. We were still, because our agreement with the county, we would probably end up providing fire service anyway, because basically whoever can get there the quickest and everything. And we don't get, we get compensated from the county if it's in the county. However, we have to still answer the call. Police, I don't know if we don't annex it, but the thing is, as Mr. Howard said, by annexing it, we at least collect the impact fees, and we have, be able to help us with our infrastructure and everything. And here's the problem, and I really don't like this project, I'll be honest with you. I don't like it. When it came to the city, we, I, we voted to disapprove this project totally. And it went back to the county, and it had approved in the county. So here it is, another one of these things that's on us again and everything. We totally turned it down, but because it's in the county, it went back to the county, and the county did, and I count it sometimes say, I wish we would have went ahead and approved it, because we could have gave it less density, okay, than what the county gave it and everything, because our ordinance is a little bit different. But we didn't, so here again, we, we kind of like stuck for suffering again, okay? And I only support going ahead and annexing it in since we're going to be providing wastewater service and everything, so we can at least get impact fees to help us with our infrastructure and wastewater and everything, so. It's one of them things. That's why we need that JPA. We need to sit down at a table and talk, okay? All right.
Motion to approve item number four, ordinance number 2025-019, final Ivy Ridge Annexation.
I second.
Okay, have a motion and a second for approval of item number, number nine, Ivy Ridge Annexation, ordinance number 2025-019. Any further discussion? Here none. Roll call again. Is Ms. Strange, you still there? Okay, Ms. Strange.
I'm here. Aye.
Aye? Councilmember Howard?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
And the chair of all as well. Motion passes five oh. Item number 11 for consideration of resolution number 2025-015R. Did I skip something? Yep, I did.
Item 10, right?
Item 10. I'm sorry. Item 10, ordinance is for final consideration of ordinance number 2025-020. Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for the annexation of a certain parcel of land in accordance with the inter-local service boundary agreement dated December 2nd, 2014, providing for conflict, severability, administration, administrative correction of Scrivener's error, recording, publication and an effective date.
Yes, sir.
This is McKinnon Grove Annexation. The city is the applicant, and requesting annexation, the subject parcel is authorized by the utility agreement with the property owner through the notice of encumbrance to annex provision. The agreement with the city was executed in October of 2022. The property is being developed and will be receiving water and sewer services from the city. The property was approved for a maximum of 660 single-family dwelling units and approximately 520,000 square feet of commercial, office, personal services and public institution uses. The annexation is being requested in order to allow building permits and to be issued by the city of Claremont, along with impact fee collection. The related requests for a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request will come at a later date and will be very similar to what has been approved in Lake County. Staff recommends council approval, ordinance 2025-20, but in your supplemental packet, there was one change offered through the applicant's attorney, her attorney, and the property owner's attorney. And it's in your packet. It deals with language that expressly makes it clear in the event of a conflict, the terms of the PUD control over the city code.
I do not have that document. What is it that it changes?
It, it deals with that it expressly makes it clear in the evident, in the event of a conflict, the terms of the PUD...
Are you speaking into the microphone? I can't hear you at all.
It expressly makes it clear, in the event of a conflict, the terms of the PUD control over the city code. And I know that Mr. Wall and Mr. Roper, their attorney for the, for the property owner, did converse and email that document.
Mr. Wall, what's your position on that?
I think it's a, I think it's already implied by the, in other words, we're annexing something subject to the Lake County PUD ordinance. And so in my view, it's already, we're making express what would have been implied.
Is that in the best interest of the city, under the circumstances?
That's for you to determine.
Okay, this is a public, oh, are you done, Ms.? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, I'm done.
I'm sorry. This is city, so this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to address this, may come to the microphone, state your name and address, and have three minutes.
Constable Ema, Regency Hills, I'm here to speak on myself as a citizen of Claremont. Ladies and gentlemen, council, okay? We know that Hawkewood Marsh is going to be expanded, but you don't realize that it's only going to be expanded before the first roundabout with 455 comes in. Or am I, did I say that right? 495 or 455? Okay, you're not allowed to answer. I'm sorry. All right. So the question you might ask, you're going to, you're going to approve this anyway, but I have to speak because it deals with Hawkewood Marsh. We know that's a nightmare. I'm not going to get upset about it. But you should ask yourself, why did Orange County and Winter Garden put all those roundabouts there to only keep two lanes on that road? Why did Orange County deny this project to go into Orange County? The only way in and out of this project is Hawkewood Marsh. So think about it. You're adding 600 cars. I just have to speak up for the people of Hawkewood Marsh that can't even get out of the development. And when Hancock gets built, we're looking at a major disaster. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Roper. I'm an attorney with the Ackerman Law Firm. As was mentioned, I did proffer some minor revisions to the annexation ordinance. We are obviously making clear what was already implied, that the project can move forward based on its zoning, preliminary plat and construction plans that have already been approved in the county. And secondly, move up the annexation date that's currently proposed. Under the ordinance that was in your packet originally, the annexation would take effect within 90 days of today's vote. We'd actually prefer to move that up to 14 days, because we know the project will get annexed inevitably. But this 14-day window allows us to go ahead and submit our building permits for the homes to the city sooner, so that the city gets to review those permits, all of them, as opposed to some of them being reviewed by the county in, in the 90-day window. And then we got to come to the city and apply for permits for other houses. And so it just makes it a little bit more consistent, a little bit more predictable for us.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Here to answer questions.
If we have any question, we, any more question, we'll call you back. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public which to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone in the public wish to address this item? Seeing no one, I close public comment and bring it back to council. What say council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Roper.
Mr. Roper, please, sir. Go ahead.
He's at the stage.
Okay, thank you. In the PUD, there's reference to McKinnon Grove, Jones Properties and Avalon with a total of 520,000 non-residential square footage properties. Are we looking at just McKinnon Groves in this? Is this also Jones and Avalon? What, can you explain that to me, please?
Well, I believe it's...
How much commercial property are we dealing with, is my question?
Yeah, I believe it's the city's intent to annex the McKinnon Grove's PUD in its entirety. And so that would include the residential and the non-residential component.
And that's in this application here today?
Yes, that's correct. The legal description of the annexation ordinance before you matches the annex, matches the legal description that's attached to the utility agreement that was entered into in 2022 for the project as a whole. So, yeah, it should include all of it.
And, thank you. And I realize it's just a concept plan, but where on Exhibit B to the PUD concept plan would the commercial property be?
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but my memory is that it's in the northwest corner of the PUD. You'll see a carve-out up there. That parcel's owned by McKinnon Groves. And then you'll see another smaller carve-out along the north boundary of the PUD.
Okay, I do see that, yes. And then where is the, isn't there a wildlife corridor in here?
That part, if it's required by the Wellness Way, it'll be in there. Because I haven't studied the PUD, I was asked to work on the annexation ordinance. But I do have the entitlements manager for Taylor Morrison, who's the one building out the project. She may be able to answer that question.
And Allison, just because I, I did get to speak with Sean Parks about this a little while back. My understanding is that they put a one-acre buffer around the outside perimeter?
Well, we've had issues in the past with confirmation of where things like infrastructure and utilities would be coming from, and from that individual. So I just want to make sure when we're voting, we have our legal lined up. Mr. Wall, do you feel comfortable that we are, in fact, if we approve this annexation, getting 500,000 square feet of commercial and that the wildlife corridor will be protected and preserved?
I can't speak as to the wildlife corridor. I, I do feel comfortable about the commercial, but I do not know the answer about the wildlife corridor.
I think that was part of the approval by the county, wasn't it? That they have designed... I think that was part of the approval by the county, wasn't it, that they have design that includes protection of the wildlife in that area? If I remember reading it.
Yeah, I mean, I believe that's the case. This is Chris Roper with Ackerman again. I mean, I helped a lot of projects in the Wellness Way corridor back when it was initially approved as a big comprehensive plan amendment by Lake County over ten years ago. And my memory is that, yes, there are protections for wildlife corridors and connectivity between projects. And like I said, this project was approved consistent with the Wellness Way standards. And so it would have had to comply with those standards.
Well, and Mr. Roper, I'm sure you'll appreciate that the items that were on the agenda earlier were supposed to have been approved to the Wellness Way standard. So please forgive my hesitation to just accept that. I want to double-check and make sure that we're making educated and informed decisions. So thank you for giving me those answers.
Yeah, understood. I had heard that that one project was non-conforming as to Wellness Way, and this one is conforming to Wellness Way, so just wanted to make that distinction.
Okay. It's also my understanding that the developer on this one has been cooperative with staff and that there's discussion about some public infrastructure that might be provided in the future in perhaps that five hundred thousand square feet or otherwise. Can you confirm that?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, there is a set aside in the PUD for a fire station. And the timing of that will be referenced in the PUD ordinance itself. And obviously, the project will have to meet concurrency as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Anyone else?
So, yes, can, John, can you go back one slide? Because I think everybody needs to understand where this is going, because I do appreciate Mr. Nemechek's thought process. You're good right there. So, so on this, you know, we're looking at this piece that we're going to be annexing. And the other large piece there is a sand mine, and we expect that that will be active for quite some time. And there's only one other large piece of property, which is just to the north, right there where the mark is. So these homes are going to be built. These properties have rights. And the only thing that's not going to be developed there is the sand mine for a while. But the rest of this is going to be built, and so for us not to annex this, as, you know, for me, would be kind of crazy. It's in Wellness Way. We're going to supply fire, water, sewer. So it's just, I don't want to annex anything that we don't have to, but if we're supplying the services, then we have to. So I'm going to support it.
Okay. Concerned with Hartwood Marsh Road, isn't, you all doing some improvement out there, doing a circle for the entrance to eliminate some dangerous spot there? A roundabout, aren't you all supposed to be putting a roundabout in there as well?
Yes, sir. That is part of the approved PUD.
Because that's been one of my, that's one of my main concerns about this, because where the entrance is right now, it is a very dangerous spot, okay, because of the hills and everything. And I want to absolutely make sure it's in there, that we're going to eliminate that with the roundabout that you told me about.
Yes, sir. I'm just telling you what's in the PUD. You can flip to the concept plan and see it yourself.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I just want to make sure, you know, we've been to next, I mean, that's a very dangerous, I know when I went out there for your ribbon cutting, I mean, it was, I didn't even turn off the road. I went past to come back because it was too unsafe for me to turn in with the traffic behind me, so. And that's why they addressed that issue for me when I was out there, so. Okay. I'm in agreement with Mr. Howe, because we basically, you know, if we're going to be providing service, we may, we may well go ahead and annex it in so we can be ahead of schedule, have some monies in the coffers to help with our infrastructure, so. Anyone else?
Motion to approve item number ten, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero two zero, final McKinnon Grove's annexation.
I second.
As a point of order, would suggest that we include the revisions that were proposed? Right, just to clarify.
Well, that's what I was asking earlier, if that document had been provided. I don't know if it's here.
Should be in the supplemental folder.
It is? Okay. Then it's approving the ordinance as presented to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, did I get a second?
Yes.
Okay, I had a motion. I had a motion and a second for approval, item number ten, final introduction, consideration ordinance number two zero two five dash zero two zero. Excuse me, any further discussion? And on, Councilmember Strange, you're still, you're still with us, eh?
Yes, she is.
Roll call again.
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Howard.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
And the Chair of all eyes, well, motion to pass is five oh. Thank you and good luck, sir. Item number eleven, consideration of resolution number two zero two five dash zero one five R.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending, restating, and re-adopting the Employment Policies Manual in its entirety, providing for severability, publication, and an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Nadine Olinger, Human Resources Director. Purpose of this presentation is to review the highlights of the changes to the Employment Policies Manual and to discuss the implementation of a new compressed work week schedule. The Employment Policies Manual represents employment-related city policies. The last time council approved this manual was March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. In your packet, in the agenda item, you were provided the redline version of the changes as well as the final version of the changes. The majority of the redline changes were administrative or editorial in nature, and the following are highlights of more significant changes. Chapter three point two, related to tuition reimbursement. Staff proposes an increase of tuition reimbursement from one thousand to one thousand five hundred dollars per fiscal year. There were some criteria already in place, which was that employee must be in an applicable degree-seeking program, be related to an employee's field of work, or directly contribute to the employee's value and potential growth within the city. Also a note that the last time this policy was changed was in December of twenty seventeen. Chapter four point five, A two, exempt employees. There's, there's no policy change, just an update to the example of how many hours the exempt employee would be required to use if they were absent for less than a full day and more than half of their scheduled workday. So in the example of an employee working ten-hour schedule, they would need to use five hours if they were absent for more than half of their scheduled workday. Chapter four point two, timekeeping. This is a new section that clarifies the city's existing practice of rounding clock-in and clock-out times for non-exempt or hourly employees. Four point seven, call-out pay. This language in the policy is covered in the holiday leave or storm leave policies. We just moved it to other areas of the Employment Policies Manual. Four point eight, working out of class pay. This is a policy change that clarifies the policy that applies to employees who work in an existing job classification. And the change also clarifies that working out of class pay does apply to employees working in a director-level capacity. And lastly, the update sets a limit of thirty days and requires reevaluation after a thirty-day period if the employee is still working out of class. Four point nine, storm deployment. This is a new policy language that is for existing current practice. So the City of Claremont participates in the statewide mutual aid system, and this system provides for the movement of local government resources throughout the state during times of disasters to assist government agencies. And that would be like applicable to police officers, firefighters. Employees who participate in this system may be compensated from portal to portal, beginning at the time of dispatch to the return to jurisdiction when equipment and personnel are in service and available for agency response. This policy requires the portal-to-portal pay be approved by the city manager before they are deployed. Five point two, holiday leave. This change removes the Fourth Friday in November as a holiday, since Fridays would already be a day off. It allows for a ten-hour holiday pay for employees who work ten-hour days. It includes language that clarifies that employees who are required to work on the day after Thanksgiving are eligible for one and a half times their annual rate of pay. It gives the city manager discretion on setting which day to observe the holiday, if it falls on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. And it requires the holiday schedule be determined by fall of the prior year. Five point three, personal days. Since the day after Thanksgiving holiday was proposed to be removed, staff recommends adding a third personal day that employees can choose to use that day or any other day. Currently, personal days must be used prior to the end of the calendar year, and they're not eligible for payout. Five point ten, injury leave. This type of leave is related to on-the-job injuries or work comp. The change clarifies that on day one of an employee's on-the-job injury, if they're seeking treatment, it's considered work time, and that's per federal law. Workers' comp begins paying sixty-six and two-thirds of an employee's pay after they've been out for eight days. Currently, employees are compensated up to forty hours of injury leave if they are unable to work due to the injury. The policy change removes the forty-hour threshold and limits injury leave to when an employee begins receiving the sixty-six and two-thirds of their pay from the workers' compensation provider, who is currently the League of Cities. And this change is also consistent with the change that was made to the Police and Fire Union contracts that were recently approved. Five point fourteen, bereavement leave. This policy includes grandparents-in-law and a stillborn child as eligible family members. That is the update to the policy. And it also grants employees who work a ten-hour shift up to thirty hours of bereavement leave. Currently, they're granted twenty-four. Six point five, performance evaluations. This policy adds language to match the current process for annual evaluations, which are conducted at the beginning of April for every year. An employee's first annual evaluation is based on their employment anniversary date. Then it will be at the beginning of April, in line with all other employees. Six point seven, demotions, and six point ten, termination for misconduct. So the policy language removes the appeal process of a demotion, suspension, or termination. Employees are still provided notice of the director's intent to demote, suspend, or terminate, and they're afforded an opportunity to respond to the director's concern prior to the director making their final decision. Six point ten, voluntary resignation. This policy change removes the ability for employees to use their accrued leave in lieu of the required two-week notice period. And six point one three, employee grievance. This policy change removes the grievance procedure, and it adds a new process called special review of protected conduct, which outlines circumstances when an employee can request a review after suspension, demotion, or termination. The policy, within the policy, it lists the protected conduct. And this does not apply to routine disciplinary actions, performance-related issues, or other employment decisions that do not involve protected conduct. Finally, we have the compressed work week, or the four tens. Staff recommends a new schedule for City Hall and city administration facilities, including fire administration and police administration, to be open from seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, and closed on, excuse me, Monday through Thursday, and closed on Fridays. Employees in those facilities would also work four ten-hour days from Monday through Thursday. Services such as online mail slot drop-off for utility payment, as well as building inspections, will still be available to our residents and customers on Fridays. If approved, the four-ten schedule would be implemented starting September first of twenty twenty-five. So in closing, our staff recommends council-approved resolution number twenty twenty-five zero fifteen R to amend, restate, and re-adopt the Employment Policies Manual and implementation of the compressed work week, four tens, as proposed.
Mr. Mayor, before this is opened up to the public, if I may, there are a lot of policy issues in this, and we've not workshopped this at all. I've heard some information from the public, and my suggestion is that we table this and address it during the budget workshops over the next two months so that we can evaluate how these proposals given to us from staff affect the budget and our operations for the upcoming fiscal year, rather than address all this tonight. This has the opportunity to be an extensive discussion, and it should be because I think there are a lot of really important points here, but I think we need to workshop it as part of the budget process. So I move to table item number eleven to be discussed during the budget workshop cycle.
Okay. Got a motion?
I move, yes, I move to table it, please.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to table this item to, which workshop?
I think a lot of these items need to be addressed during the process. I think there's some cross-departmental issues. So I just think it's up to staff, if they want these changes, to present those to us, as they're also presenting the budget proposals for the citizens and how it'll impact the millage and the budget. So I think it needs to be done throughout the process, as part of the process. And then when we adopt the final budget and millage rate, I think we should also be adopting the new employee handbook.
Okay, well, I have a mo. I can have a motion and a second. Miss, I do have a mo, I did, I do have a motion and a second for, for, excuse me. A motion and a second for tabling this, I have a, miss, I'm gonna say a further discussion because I did want to hear something from the public, because I, like you, I've had actually people reach out to me since last night, since I first went through this yesterday. And today, I've actually heard from a few people, so I see, I thought a couple of people in the audience here were wanting to speak out. So I would like to hear what some of the people out here in the public have to say before I take the vote, if that's okay, anything. And before I move on.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem with public comment, but I think they deserve to know if we're doing it, you know, if we're voting on it tonight, or if we're tabling it tonight. I have no issue continuing public comment on this.
Well, ma'am, once, once they take a vote on, we moving on to the next item, okay? So that's why I say now, before I take the vote, I don't have no problem opening up the public comment. But. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
Is that, I'm sorry, but is that in order with Robert's rules? We have a motion and a second to table.
Yeah, we kind of jumping the gun here a little bit, yeah, but, but that's okay, because it's kind of considered discussion, it's still, after your motion. And I hate to, but I wanted to, I'm sorry, Mr. White, I'm not out of line. It was item on, on one of the other, item number nine, lady brought up a question, and I meant to address that before we voted, and I've lost note of it in, lost my note here. But if I may go back and address that, the thing on the gopher turtles. Kurt, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the policy is they find gopher turtles out there, they have to remove all them gopher turtles before they can do any construction, right?
Yes, they do apply for, for the wildlife.
Yeah, okay.
They go through the state to do that, yes.
It's certain, you know, it's certain protected wildlife that's out there, if they find in gopher turtles in the Pacific, because I know I've gone through that too many times.
Sandskiing, gopher turtles, yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, she brought that up, doing one of the other things, I made, I made a note here and I bypassed, but, come on.
I know. I've lived here my whole life. It's a travesty. Charlene Harrison, fourth, DeSoto Street, Claremont. And I don't mind, and I hear him, Ms. Strange, and that's fine. I would propose to table it, too. But the public is supposed to have a chance, and then y'all get to table it. But I don't know who came up with this. First of all, who put this on the agenda and wanted to change all the stuff? Can y'all answer that? Are we gonna sit here and play that game again? I'm sorry?
It's the same response I gave you before. It's collectively done by the staff, and then we decide together.
But did employees come to y'all and ask for this all to be changed, or this was staff? And I've heard that maybe our assistant manager had something to do with this. That's just talk. Is that true?
Yeah, well, I, as, as interim manager-
Can you speak up a little bit, sir? I'm sorry.
As interim manager Wagner, and Wagner said this was a joint collective effort between human resources and I was reviewing the human resources policy manual, so I-
And by staff and not the employees?
I, I'm not sure I follow, with staff is employees.
Well, the employees that are gonna be involved in this, what was a survey put out to the employees that this will be ha-, going to?
The employees were notified and asked beforehand, yes, ma'am.
Is that yes?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I, you need to go down to the, I know, 'cause it's hard, some-
Sorry.
On this end of it, it may be good out there. Well, I'll tell you two things and then you guys can table it. I have never, we're in the United States of America and to put on there that you can't have an appeals thing? Every company, everywhere, sir. And I really liked you. I didn't want that other guy, Dan. This is not cool. I don't know who and what y'all are up to, but that's not cool. Then I wanna know about where, if you're off for ten hours, but that you only have to get dock five pay. I mean, listen, when I worked eight hours, if I was out four, I got dock four. I mean, I know I've been out of work for a long, long time. I was able to retire blessed at thirty-six years old with a company, but I mean, really, that, that's not cool. So, I mean, I hope y'all will table this. You need to find out and get to the bottom and ask more questions. But let me tell you, when you don't have an appeals process in America, I don't care about Claremont, hey, this is some bad crap. And I suspect somebody's wanting to do something here. I don't know what it is, but now that I know tonight, we'll get to the bottom of it. Table it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. Brian Bain, two forty-five Nanica Mile Drive. I'll, I'll email the council since we're gonna be, uh, tabling this, but, uh, I think there are some ways, I, and the reason why I wanna speak now is 'cause if this isn't the budget, we have three minutes to talk at budget about the entire budget, and this is gonna be a facet of that. So, the reality is, is that if we're gonna do a, a four-ten, I think we can have a four-ten if that's what the employees want. But then some can work Monday through Thursday, some can work Tuesday through Friday. There's no reason why we can't have Friday operations. Uh, one of my biggest, first thing that stuck out to me is because of my profession working in real estate, if I have a client who closes on a house late Thursday or, or on Friday, they cannot get their water turned on in the city of Claremont on a Friday if city hall is closed. That means they're moving into a home with no water. Well, if that Monday that follows is Labor Day or Memorial Day, or if it happens to be Christmas Day or New Year's Day, that is now four days without water. Which means either the seller of that home has to be really kind and pay for their water for four days even though they don't have to, or they have no water. That's a problem. Where, I, 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 I'm glad to hear that there was some sort of email. If I were the council, I'd request, I'd want all that data. If, if there's not an employee relations committee or work group that, that vetted this out and gave information on it, I'd ask for that data. Same with our business community. Did the South Lake Chamber get involved? Did Main Street, uh, downtown Claremont get involved? Um, were, were HOA associations involved? Because they work with the city to get information with, uh, with liens and, and fines and fees uh, for the estoppel process. So there are a lot of factors, I think, that are questions and I, I'll make sure to email those things to you. But I really do think it doesn't have to be black or white. The citizens are paying for services. The services should be Monday through Friday. Um, if not, eight to five. I love the idea of seven to six. I don't know if it has to be every day. I think a lot of city halls are open one night a week, uh, later. Um, I think that, uh, you could even throw in potentially a, one Saturday a month from nine to twelve if, if you have that option and a flexible schedule. Let's be progressive with our scheduling, but it doesn't have to be a one size fit all in that category. And I really do not would like to see us have city hall closed on Fridays. We're not gonna save any money with that. Uh, if that's the thing, we're gonna turn the, uh, you know, heat up or the air, air down. Well, we're gonna be open an hour early and an hour late every day. That's gonna make up those eight hours right there. And if we're gonna have somebody on call to come in on Fridays to do water service, well, then now we're paying what, overtime? To have that person come in when they could just have that as a part of their schedule. Uh, so I think there's some things that need to be fleshed out with that. Uh, I leave the rest of the policy things, uh, up to HR, working with the employees and working with staff and the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Paula Hoyzington, five sixty-four East DeSoto Street. Um, some of the same concerns that, that has already been presented. One of the things, um, I saw the tuition reimbursement. I didn't see if there was anything that mentioned that the employee must be off of probation. I may have missed it, before we invest in paying tuition. Something to think about. I also do agree that this should be a discussion with the budget. And also that, um, uh, the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, um, is a good idea. I don't think we should have a day where there's no services provided for, um, for the citizens, so Friday. I mean, I know we, COVID has taught us that doing business as we normally do has changed. There's hybrid work, work from home strictly. But I don't think that with the, with the municipality, the city council, or s- city dwelling should be closed on Friday. And if we can work, um, work in the schedule out to where there is access Monday through Friday. Um, my question also, I do have a question, if there was a task force with the city manager, the interim city manager, HR, all the things that were mentioned, so that the employees with employee representation, not just the managers or the directors making these decisions, but voices were heard from, um, a representation of all of the employees that work for the city. The other thing, I was concerned about the grievance, that they're not paying a grievance, but I thought I saw something that came up later that said there was another process that you were going to use that still allowed the employee to voice a complaint or concern if they felt that they were not heard right, so. Looking forward to this being workshopped and just, just discuss a little bit further to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the citizens as well as the employees, that they have a role in how this works out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is the public forum. Anyone in the public which addresses item may come to the microphone and state your name and address in half, three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment. And there was a motion on the floor, a motion and a second on the floor, that we table this, uh, until budget workshop. I didn't get a date, but whenever the first budget workshop, I guess we could be, uh, start discussing this, um, at that time. And let me, let me say this because I, I, I heard this out here and this is one of the comments I, I kept getting. Uh, and I know I asked this question in my general review yesterday about the employ-, the employees. How do they like this? Okay. I know what I was told i- i- in my, um, review yesterday about the, all the employees love it, but I'm getting other, other words and that caused my curiosity like what I just heard out there. Did they actually, did, was the employees able to be, uh, surveyed without any fear of repercussion? Okay, 'cause I, I'm hearing a couple, actually a couple came to me and said they scared to, uh, speak out because, um, they scared of repercussions, okay? So, I have a body, I, a lot of employees may not be happy with this, was that one of the answers I got yesterday was the fact that, uh, we providing some of them options, whether they go to the ten day work week or whatever and everything, which if that's the case, you know, I, but still, let's, let's go ahead and table it and work it, you know? Uh, but that was my main concern after meeting with y'all yesterday. I got a few calls about it and a couple of, uh, items. I'm like, all at once. I'm getting inundated yesterday, last night and today about it, you know, of course.
Me too, sir. Well, and I, I envision, I envision as we, as we have the department presentations during the budget process, that's a chance for them to say, hey, these items that we requested, this schedule that we requested, this is how this could work for our proposed operations for twenty twenty-six. You know, so I think that it's a natural part of the budgeting process because you have to, you have to have your operations and your calendar set in order to do a budget. So, this is operational and it's budgetary. So I just think it should be all done, you know, when we come to whatever the date is, is it September first? We're adopting the millage and the budget and the employee handbook for fiscal year twenty-six.
Excuse me, that was one of my other concern that I brought up yesterday, why are we going September first instead of October first, the start of a new fiscal year? Why are we gonna jump into this at the last month of the physical, this physical year and have all this come in at this year's budget, which wasn't budgeted for?
I could have my dates wrong, sir. I thought we had to adopt-
No, it's, it's September, 'cause I questioned that myself yesterday. And instead of moving it to one October, okay? That was one of the other questions I had yesterday and, um, so, so, I, I, you know, those are a couple of items that I, I had some concern with, uh, yesterday and mainly the four-ten because I, I hear a lot of, I don't, and of course, like I said yesterday, I don't see where going four-ten gonna save the city a lot of money. Okay, if that's the reason you're doing it, I don't, I just don't see that's happening. But anyway, let's go ahead and I got a motion and a second to table this item unless another council member has something to say.
I just wanna bring up something because we saw that a lot of this was policy discussion.
Right.
And I've already spoke to Mr. Van Wagner about this, but I'll bring it up to council as well. Um, we saw that some of the policy hasn't been addressed since twenty seventeen. And ultimately, what I'd like to see is policy brought to us over a period of time where every council meeting, we're getting a piece of policy that we're reviewing and updating so that our policies stay current. And so it's just an easy way for us to, to have that there. And most of the time, it's pretty easy. It's small changes, um, instead of putting it all into here. And just allows us to be more flexible. Um, but I can support the tabling.
I have no problem, uh, with looking at policy changes, but as I've said, said in the past, these kinda things shouldn't end up on, on the agenda without going to workshops and being discussed first.
That's what I'm saying, is that this would come up as a, as a regular policy review where we're looking through that, so.
And this is, I've been saying this all along, 'cause we keep getting these kinda things on, on here. Um, be honest with you, I was hearing rumor about this, but no one had discussed it with me until yesterday, the first time I really had to sit down and discuss this, so. Uh, but these kinda item, before we put them on work, on agendas and everything, need to be sharp so we can hear how each council member, uh, feel about it. That's the only way we can do that, through workshops, okay? So, I do have a motion and a se-, Mr. Peters, I'm sorry, did you, were you gonna make a comment?
No.
I thought, I saw you get, okay. I do have a, uh, motion and a second for tabling this to budget workshop, um, whatever date that may be. Uh, the first one, I can't remember. July eighth, is it?
July eighth.
Okay.
July eighth and July tenth, but we just have to set the date, the times today for our budget. That's our budget workshops.
Okay. So, is there any further discussion?
So, we need Allison to amend. We need Allison to amend her motion with a specific date, either the eighth or the tenth.
So, uh, I don't, I don't want to address this as its own thing. I do not want to prioritize staff's request for policy changes when we're working on the budget and the plan for next year. We have a lot to address that we haven't workshopped. And I think it's incumbent upon staff to present to us plans as we go through the process for budgeting to convince us that some of these things are beneficial to the citizens of Claremont. I do not want a staff-requested item to pri-, get, take priority over the policies and, and procedures that we need to be addressing for the citizens. So, I don't wanna say, well, we're gonna address this during the budget workshop. We only have two budget workshops and we have a two hundred million dollar budget that we need to address. So, I think that as part of that process, whether we do four hour days or whether there are specific issues, each of these department heads have a chance to do a presentation to us and I think they need to be prepared to address the items that are in this proposal. But I am not suggesting that we commandeer a budget workshop for three or four hours to discuss the items that were just presented to us. And these are three to four hours, so if we wanna do a separate workshop on this after the budget, that's fine with me. But we need to get this budget, the comp plan. We need to be finding out what the DOGE audit says. There's a lot of things that we need to be doing and not moving this ahead of the items that we have on the agenda the next couple of months.
I think Christian has some clarification.
Well, what I would suggest is, you know, it's just a little bit of academic, but in the old days, the correct motion was always mo-, motion to postpone. And you could say motion to postpone to the next meeting, motion to postpone indefinitely. These days in modern America, and this is true in all cities and counties, people say motion to table. It doesn't make it wrong, but in any event, what I'm suggesting to the council member Strange is perhaps what she intends based on what I just heard was a motion to postpone indefinitely. And then y'all can make a decision with staff as to when it's brought back.
Okay.
So I moved, I amend my motion to be a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Before we do that, when, our, our next, um, workshop, what are we doing on that workshop? 'Cause that's June, June seventeenth, right?
Next Tuesday.
Right?
That's a discussion about the downtown.
That's all just downtown?
Yes.
And honestly, I wanted to bring up during my reports that I have some TDC updates relative to parks and recreation that some of them relate to downtown that I would love if we're adding to that workshop, to add to that workshop because they do relate. And, and it would be a lot to do both Parks and Rec and downtown, and I don't wanna take from Mr. Howard's workshop either, but for me, I would wanna prioritize that because that's a huge part of our budget that needs to be addressed as part of the vision for twenty twenty-six. So I, I just wanna put that out there before this becomes an item that we add to the workshop next week. That, that is something that I really have been working on hard and would like to present to all of you what I've been working on as well, whether it's during the Parks and Rec presentation during budget, but there's a lot for us to do. And I feel like this is cutting in front of the things that we have all been working on. And we don't get to talk to each other. So these workshops are important for us to talk about the things that the citizens have told us they want and the projects that we're working on.
Council member Strange, I'm, I understand that and I agree with you, but some of these items on the downtown are actually budget-related items that I need direction from the council on. For example, Meet Us in the Middle. That's something-
Completely agreed, yeah. In my mind, next week starts the budgeting process. I mean, that's how I view next weeks. It may not be published as a budget workshop, but as we're adopting policy and plans for twenty twenty-six, I think next week is really the kickoff of that. I'm excited for it. I'm, I can't wait to hear what Mr. Howard has to say. So I just don't want this issue, which was brought to us by staff, to be something that cuts in front of all the other projects that we've been working on. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
That's why my motion's indefinite. I mean, we can add it back to the agenda whenever we want.
So you, you, you changed your mo-, your motion to postpone indefinite?
Correct.
Did I get a second? On her new motion?
Second.
Okay. Okay.
So lost. Um, what dates do we have workshops right now?
Next Tuesday is the seventeenth.
Next Tuesday is the seventeenth.
Right, that's in, that's this month.
Right.
And then next month, we have July eighth and we have July tenth also.
Which is all dedicated to the budget.
Right.
Correct.
His, we'd like to have those all day to go through. We need some time.
Yeah.
Well, and Mr. Van Wagner, I do not have the July eighth and tenth. I actually don't have any of these workshops on my calendar.
Well, eight, the eighth and, eighth and tenth, was it? Uh, there was sent out, uh, an email that we were gonna be starting the budget process, um, workshops. I know, like you say, we have to set the times on each one of them. Uh, we didn't establish time, but now here, they say all day. Which is, which, which is normally what we've been doing, okay?
And so the reason that we're doing the eighth and the tenth, so we're skipping that meeting, so would council be interested in doing a workshop either the fifteenth or the seventeenth?
Of July?
Of July. I mean, and I agree with you that we need a lot of, we're gonna need a lot of workshops. There's a lot of information coming at us.
Uh, I, I'm good with both of the states, they both. Um, I might have an issue on the seventeenth. I think I, I think the fifteenth is better, or maybe the seventeenth in the morning for me 'cause I might have to fly out that night. I need to check my dates on something else, but I should be good if we do the morning of the seventeenth. But I'm good with both dates if you wanna do both. I just wanna disclose that upfront.
Anybody else have a conflict for like the fifteenth?
The fifteenth works better for me than the seventeenth. I teach class on the seventeenth.
Fifteenth's better. So, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, let me check here. I'm trying to, trying to get to my calendar. Was this July?
Yes. Yes.
Seventeenth. Well, actually, I, I had the fifteenth already down for a council workshop. That's, that's one, well, I guess, and the reason I guess I had that is because I always schedule the third Tuesday as a workshop anyway. With, that was a standard thing with us, third Tuesday being a workshop.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I have that as well, but it's a hold and I'm looking at the calendar, my city calendar, and that's where I, I don't have any, anything on the city calendar.
So, we want to do July eighth, July tenth, and July fifteenth, correct?
Fifteen hundred hours.
Yeah, fifteen hundred hours.
I'd like to request we start at nine, because it's gonna be an all-day discussion. We'd like it to be-
On Tuesday, the fifteenth is started?
Wait a minute, July eighth as a workshop?
Yes.
July eighth and tenth?
That's, that's just historically what the council's done.
Well, well, keep in mind, I'm, now that I go back and look at it, you know, July eighth is a, is a, um, council.
Yeah, that's why we're not having council.
We cancel any council.
That's why we vote it to the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, that's why we put it in the twenty-ninth.
You all decided to cancel the meeting for a budget workshop.
Okay.
So, we can do the workshop.
Yeah, I got all day, well, I think originally when I put it in my, in my, in my, uh, calendar, I put it in for three o'clock. But do you want all day go, well, we used to start-
This last time you did it all day and-
Well, we used to start at nine o'clock.
And being that I'm brand-new, you probably want to give me more time, not less time.
So, so the fifteenth could handle Ms. Strange's request for both this and the Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Ms. Strange?
Well, I'm sure Parks and Rec is gonna come up during the bu- regular budget process. Right? I mean, we would be seeing that anyway. So, the, the Parks and Rec should come up during the normal budget process. I just thought-
So, i- if you ha- I'm just gonna tell you from my experience with the budget process, if you have some in-depth stuff that you want to do, the days when we're going through that budget is a high-level overview and we are not getting into the nuts and bolts of how things work.
Can it, can it go ahead and, uh, let, let me move this motion forward because I think, if I'm not mistaken, what I heard from Mr. Van Wagner earlier is I think he was gonna come back to us about these dates on the workshop anyway during your report.
During the report.
I'm thinking I heard that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, let's quit wasting time. We, we, we'll come back to the, the, the dates and time on that, but let's move this motion, uh, forward. Have a motion and a second to go ahead and postpone it indefinitely. Um, item number, what was it, eleven?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here, here none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair will aye as well. Motion passed. Mr. Peterson, I, I don't-
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes five oh. Okay, so we, we will go ahead and postpone that indefinitely. Hopefully, one of the workshops, the early next couple of workshops, we can re-talk about it and we can get back with staff and give them some direction on which way to go. Item number twelve, ordinance number two zero two five dash zero two two, introduction. Um, nine sixty-three West Juniata Street.
An ordinance of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, adopting the Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the City of Claremont, Florida pursuant to the Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act, Chapter one sixty-three, Part two. Florida statutes setting forth the authority for adoption of the Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, setting forth the purpose and intent of the Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, providing for the adoption of the Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, establishing the legal status of the Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, providing for conflict, severability, administrative correction of scrivener's error, publication, and an effective date.
Okay, anyone in the public wish to address this item?
Is this the one by the dentist at West Avenue in Juniata behind me? The one they were gonna try to change to commercial?
CBD, yes.
Kurt, is that it? And John, the one I talked to you about, is that it? Okay. Charlene Harrison, Fourth DeSoto Street, Claremont. I'm the one that also, I know I'm glad the planning and zoning did their thing. For you guys to understand, you see that again, I am so against this and I've told you about transparency. That needs to show what's really on that street. Now, I'm happy about this because I called John and we had about a twenty-minute go-addict conversation. John was very, very patient and kind because there's only four houses on each side of that street. It goes between West Avenue and Tenth Street. That's down by the Garden Club and Little Center Lake. And then to even entertain at this city, to turn that into commercial? And this is what I've said, I've heard that somebody said it in this council. It's called gentrification. And I don't care if you're black, white, Hispanic, pink, purple, understand that word. This is what's going on around all of our historic neighborhoods, trying to push everybody out and making it so miserable. And I'll deal with that later because my husband is gonna be dealing with this later. Is, finally, somebody came to their senses and John, in his wisdom, was able to figure this out that there's no reason this woman couldn't run this business. And that is a hearing aid business, is that right? For, for, I think for infants, okay. But here's the deal, and I want to teach you something here. She could have always done this, but these people are coming in and wanting these inexpensive places to pick up so they don't have to pay high dollar on the highway or somewhere. And then they want it rezoned commercial and pick off our neighborhoods one by one by one. Do you think that's right to put a commercial thing right in the middle of your little street that has four neighbors on one and four on the other? They're sweet little cottage-type homes. So, I hope y'all learn that and I've talked to John that hopefully when it comes through city hall, I asked him, what the heck were y'all doing and thinking? Because they can be told, ma'am, sir, you can run this business and we just need to do this. I'm so sick of hearing the smoke and mirrors and all of these things and trying to shove this down the residence because I live there and I still will continue to speak. My neighborhood has me speaking for three streets over there. And Juniata takes care of theirselves. Don't mess with them. I don't even have to be involved in that. And three of them were on vacation when this happened, so John, I did find the answer out to that. Just happened to be three of them on vacation during all of this and the letters that went out. One was gone for two weeks and she came back engaged from Paris, okay? My sweet little neighbor. So, but that being said, y'all pay attention. I want you to put this and file it in your file at home and remember this. It doesn't have to get turned to commercial. That's bullcrap. It does not. And they can still do it as we're under R three, I am residential office professional, and then everybody's happy. And if they don't like it, tell them to move on. That's the answer. Tell them to go buy a high-dollar piece of property.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Anyone else in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and, address, give your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I close the public comment and bring it back to council. If I'm not mistaken, this saying, uh, changing from medium density to residential slash residential slash office, not commercial, right?
No, so this is one that I argued against when they were gonna bring it into CBD. And I'm super happy with going to residential office, so I'm gonna support it.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, the-
The last proposal was that it become CBD.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm-
Central business district.
I'm looking at what's before me right now.
That's because I argued against it and we got it changed, so they did a great job. Thank you.
Okay. And you, you made a motion?
Motion to approve item number twelve, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero two two, intro. Nine sixty-three West Juniata Street.
For introduction?
For an intro, yeah, I said intro.
Okay. So, I got a motion.
And a second.
And a second.
And a second for approval of item number twelve, introduction of nine sixty-three West Juniata Street. Any further discussion?
No.
Here none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And chair will vote aye as well. I'm assuming you said, miss, uh, I, I couldn't hear you. Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh. Item number thirteen, introduction for ordinance number two zero two five dash zero two four.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending Article Two Code Enforcement and Nuisance Abatement, Division One, Generally, Section one dash forty-one, Intent of Article, Providing that the City Council shall appoint a code enforcement special magistrate, and amending Section one dash forty-two, Alternate Code Enforcement System and Nuisance Abatement System, Renumbering Section one dash forty-three, Supplemental Enforcement, and amending Division Two Code Enforcement Board, Section one dash seventy-five, Created, Jurisdiction, Enforcement by Courts, Section one dash seventy-six, Appointment and Qualifications, Section one dash seventy-seven, Council Named, Providing for Conflict Severability, Severability Codification, The Administrative Correction of Scrivener's Error, Publication, and an Effective Date.
Okay, again, this is introduction. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes.
Ms. Nemec, Regis, Zee Hills, I'm here to speak on myself as a Claremont citizen. I'm a little confused. Where did she read that from? Because that's not in my packet that I got online. All right, matter of fact, all these pages are very vague. And why do we keep going back to this when we finally got a decent code enforcement? I thought we all agreed a while ago, we keep government out of city business. This is ridiculous. Every time we get something, we always throw it away when it's working. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Linda Camps. I live at thirteen sixty Camden Court. My question is this. We now have a board present doing the code enforcement. Is there any issue as to why, and can you give us a reason why, your rational reason for getting rid of the present board to elect a magistrate? Which I'm on the understanding, is that a volunteer job or is that gonna be a paid salary?
Any other questions, ma'am?
No, sir.
That's it? Okay, well, thank you. Let me, let me finish with pub comment and we gonna answer that question for you, okay? Anyone else? Anyone else was it like, uh, like to address this item?
Charlene Harrison, Fourth DeSoto Street, Claremont. Okay, I'm gonna speak to Ms. Myers and the mayor because those two know about code board. That was my husband that brought this code board back and came in here with about a fifteen, twenty-minute presentation. There is nothing more American than standing before your peers at a code board hearing. And I'll tell you why, for any of you that are not from Florida and not born and raised here. I'm real proud about that, that the state of Florida did so that you would be before your peers. Because I always tell people, especially if you're like, let's say, a murderer and you're up for whatever and you've got a chance to either go before a judge or a jury trial, you better take a jury trial every single day of the week. And I want to know, and I'll stand back here so you don't take my minutes out. I want an answer from either the city manager and whoever else. Who, the, the tooth fairy didn't come down and say, put this on the agenda and let's go try to dismantle it. Now, I'm gonna stand back here. You can stop the clock. Somebody tell me who did this and then I'll come back and finish what I gotta say. Who did it?
Ms. Fourth, if you, you, you want to finish speaking, go ahead and finish speaking. Uh, we will answer your question once you're finished.
Because this is bullcrap. And I know Chandra was on it and did a really good job. Tim knows about this. And this is why the state of Florida did this. And again, I say as a fourth generation, I am tired of everything being dismantled. And I see there's an air going on at this city hall from four days a week and city being closed on Friday to the public to this. And I went and watched that magistrate when we had him before. This guy's dump, dump, fines, fines, didn't care what anybody's saying, whatever. Would you like that? And I want to explain to you guys, and so Tim already knows it, whether he and I've got problems about in here. Ms. Chandra knows it. I assume Todd probably does. But when you stand before your peers, is why my husband did this, is a thirty-one-year job in Orlando. And I want to know who wants to dismantle, to this city manager, to anybody else here, what we worked a year and a half to get. My husband even got the, them to vote for the funds to give them two more code enforcement officers down here. But when you stand before your peers of the people that you're gonna run in town, it tends to straighten you up, you get in line, and you get in compliance. And my husband actually watched too about this thing. We got some more stuff to work on and I'll bring that out another night because I'm on a roll right now. I'm like, somebody's pissed me off and I'm pretty bad pissed off right now. But that being said, we are taking the funds and they're going into the general fund. They're not supposed to do that. You're supposed to do it to go put it back in the community to help a poor lady that she can't fix her fence going down? Okay, we didn't have the code enforcement officers. My husband got that. And now we're gonna dismantle this? Really? I don't think so. So, it only is gonna take three of you? I know, Mr. Peterson, I had to talk to you. I don't have to talk to the mayor and Ms. Chandra because she was actually in Sir Proudly on that, that board. Y'all need to stop this. These people deserve to have in front of like a jury in the conversation. And then I want to know, who did this?
Thank you. Anyone else?
May I finish? I didn't do my whole three minutes. There's one other thing I'd like to say, please.
Yes, ma'am.
As of now, with the code enforcement board, you have volunteers who are doing this job. What I don't understand and what I need you to explain and think about, why are you paying a salary to do a job that's already been done, being done on a volunteer versus? You're wasting taxpayer's money. You got people here who are willing to do the job, who are here to volunteer, and unless they did a really exceptionally bad job that you are completely dissatisfied with the board, then I get it. But other than that particular reason, I don't get why you're gonna pay somebody to do a job when you have people here in the town that are willing to do the job and volunteer to do the work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address this item may come to the microphone and state your name and address and have three minutes. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'm gonna close the public comment. And before I open up, let me say this. Yes, I served on the code enforcement board for three years, some years ago. And I, I was truly dedicated to it, like everything else, I'm dedicated. I didn't know there was a, until yesterday, again. I hate to keep saying this, but yesterday, uh, well, until I saw the agenda, I didn't realize that we was having an issue with our code enforcement board, okay? Uh, this came as a surprise to me. Uh, of course, my question is, are we having trouble getting people to participate? Okay? Are they meeting? Why are we trying to change this and go back? Because I fought hard. This is one of the things I really wanted to do and we got done, uh, last year, year before last, I think it was. Finally got, got rid of the magistrate and brought back the code enforcement board. Because I must agree with Ms., Ms. Fourth. Uh, I prefer being in front of my peers than having some guy, person from out of town. We pay some guy from out of town to come in here and tell us how to handle our property problems here. I'd rather hear from my neighbors next door, uh, my peers and everything. Uh, that's one of the reasons I served on the code enforcement board for over three years, um, so I can do that. However, if we're having trouble getting those that's volunteering to participate or come to council, uh, code enforcement board meetings, we may have to do something different. Okay, we, I know I asked this question when we implemented the code enforcement board before. Do we have to have seven members on the code enforcement board? And when I was told, yes. Just like P and Z, we have to have seven. We have to have seven. That was, hey, if we could have cut it down to five, you know, can we keep it for, a field? Okay? Uh, I don't know if we, we missing any members right now. I haven't seen anything come before us saying we were missing members on the code enforcement board. And if there's people on, out there that's volunteered to be on code enforcement, that we can fill them if they are missing. Other one of my thoughts I, I discussed with you, uh, Mr. Mathes yesterday was the fact that I think if we go back to a monthly meeting, instead of every two months, you would get better participation of the members. Because right now, when you doing every two months, which I ejected to, to begin with, people don't tend to remember and they, they get obligated to something else and they, they forget. But when you get on a regular monthly schedule, I think the people will show up on your, to your board more often. So, maybe we need to take a look at that as well. It's just, a lot of these different things, I, I just think we need to do. And I'm not really, really willing right now to just go to a magistrate.
Chris- Christian, do we have, so we do have to have seven on code enforcement? We can't reduce it to five?
Uh, the Florida statutes do say that, uh, five-member boards are possible. Actually, I'm trying to look now, right now, if there's a population requirement. Sometimes that's the case. So, I, I see that the local governing body of a municipality that has a population of less than five thousand may reduce a seven-member code board to five members upon the simultaneous expiration of the terms of office. upon the simultaneous expiration of the terms of office of two members of the board, but, oh, yep, we need seven.
Yeah, well, see, because that was one of the things I addressed before. If we were having trouble filling it, do we have to go to seven? And we say, yeah, same thing with P and Z. Okay, we have to have seven members there. I know I talked to a couple residents came to me last week and asked me about boards and everything, how to get on them. I asked them to come down and fill out a, a resume and submit it and everything. Any opening, soon as some opening come, we'll, we'll call them or whatever. One of the things I said, I think that John and Mr. Matthews yesterday is go back and look in our records if we missing people and see if anybody on record, and call them and see if they, they're willing to come and sit on the code enforcement, okay? If we keep, because we probably keeping a file of those now, right, Kirk? Because we wasn't keeping them before. We keeping a file of all the people that put in resumes, however they weren't selected. We usually keep them on record now and files so we can go back and call them.
I, I think about meeting monthly will probably be better than every two months. Because I know when I was over, we met every month, so you didn't lose, you know, you didn't forget, you didn't, you know.
Well, when I was on, I was here every month. I mean, I don't think, I think in the three years I served, I think I may have missed one, one meeting or so that I couldn't arrange to get out of, so. But other than that, and I do think that we have to have more dedicated people. Because sometime I see the same thing with our P and Z board. I may tune into a P and Z, and I may even see four, five members there sometime, okay? And I'm just saying that if we, we, if you ask to be on one of these boards, it's free, and you're not getting paid for this, be dedicated to it, you know? I've said this often, you know what the requirements are, you know what time they meet, you know all this here. And before you volunteer to go, make sure you can do that, okay? For example, you know, that's one of the reasons I sit here on this council because I knew I couldn't have met the times before when I was working. So when I retired, hey, let's go for it now, and I'd be here every, every chance to get. So, um, this is an introduction. I don't know if y'all want to move it forward or just?
Can y'all answer the question? Do you put it on the agenda for y'all now?
Well, I, I, I can't, well, I, I think they said before it was a staff decision, okay? Now?
But staff has a name. I want to know the names.
Mr. Van Wagner, can you give us the impetus beyond, the impetus on why this is now before us?
Sure. We're, we're having a challenge having the amount of people we need to be able to make decisions on that board. So that is part of our issue, I've been told. So we're here before councils say, we have a problem, we don't know how to fix it. We need your involvement. Either A, tell us we'd like to continue and help us solve the schedule or how to get a majority of people there to legally make a decision. Or B, go to a whole different way of doing this. So we're asking for your vision and input on that. But we, we need help with a larger turnout. That's the problem right now.
So, because if four people don't show up, you don't have quorum, so that means everything gets canceled.
Four is a quorum.
No, if four people don't show up. So if you don't have four, then you don't have quorum, so then you cancel everything.
That's my understanding.
Does that happen a lot? I'm sorry, Todd, I didn't know you were still talking.
No, so, so.
I have two that are ready to serve right now and would be there at every meeting. They weren't, they couldn't get in on it. They weren't chosen.
It, it doesn't happen a lot. However, I just want to point out that the special magistrate and the, the code board attorney, the fees for that would negate each other. It'd be the same price. So they, basically, the code board attorney that sits up there would just turn into the magistrate. Not the exact same one, but that position.
We would go out and hire a new, new attorney to be the magistrate of, well, somebody to be the magistrate.
Someone, right. I'm just letting you know, it's, it's an even fee. Now, if we went to every month, the increase, the fee would go up. I'm just letting you know that as well.
So, so I like both. And I've actually argued for both. So I still like having a code enforcement board for our normal stuff. I also like having a magistrate for the nuisance abatement side. And I've argued for that consistently. Full stop. If we're having an issue with getting quorum to go, then we do have to look at other options, and I'm okay with that, too. My preference is to have the board for the normal stuff and a magistrate for the other. So I don't know where you guys are, but.
I mean, I'm in total agreement with that. I used to be on the code enforcement board a while ago, and then all of a sudden it got disbanded and they, they got a magistrate. And it kind of makes you feel bad, you know, you're volunteering your time, and they go, all right, take a hike. But now that we're doing advertising in a lot of the fifty-five and over communities, there's a lot of people in there that, you know, love to do these things. So maybe since we're in there on a monthly basis, maybe put a little thing, you know, code enforcement board is, we're looking for members to be that, volunteer your time once a month, every Tuesday, whatever it might be. And I think you're gonna get people to come. But I mean, if nobody knows that there's available, if, if it's not being advertised, if nobody's gonna know that there's people needed. Then you maybe have a nine-person board, so this way if like two are missing, then you're, you know, you're still in good shape.
The quorum just goes up at that point.
So.
Seven is good enough.
Seven is good, yeah.
If I may, if I was to, and I just want to be clear with Mr. Law, if I was to make a motion to move this forward, could I move it forward with the code enforcement, code enforcement special magistrate for the nuisance abatement board side? Only?
I mean, I.
Because it's an intro and some major change.
Yeah.
Or we just deny it and it comes back?
Well, yeah, you're right. It's not a final approval. It's just a totally different ordinance, you know?
I, I'm aware that the code said that the code board acts as the nuisance board in that case.
Oh, so the code board actually is your nuisance.
Yeah, we do have. Correct, but they're not happy about that.
Yeah, that's correct.
I was just finna say, we do already have an abatement board in place.
I, I haven't reviewed your code regarding the nuisance abatement board on this subject. So that may be the case, but it may require language that we don't, we're not ready to, you're not ready to approve because it might require more than what you're able to amend in this ordinance.
So, so I'm gonna make a motion to postpone item number thirteen, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-four, intro to code enforcement special magistrate.
A second.
Okay.
Postpone.
Postpone it.
To postpone, so you can do the nuisance abatement?
Well, we, we have a nuisance abatement board already. We, when we set up the code enforcement board last time, we also put in place a nuisance abatement board and everything, and policy. And we, we, because that's what the main, and one of the other areas I was really after because of some of the issues we have out there in the community where we have a lot of nuisance places out there, and without that abatement board, we couldn't do anything, and the person that really run it pretty much is responsible is our police department.
That's right.
Is the police department.
But my only issue with that is that the majority of people who are on that code enforcement board did not want to be special magistrate for nuisance abatement. So they can bring that back to us, and we can do whatever we need to do.
They did express their concern, for sure, yes.
They were all against it.
They were against it, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right.
I'd postpone indefinitely, right?
Yep.
Indefinitely?
He made the motion and I seconded it.
Well, we have, we have a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely. Item number thirteen, ordinance number two zero two-three dash zero two-four. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
If there are none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All the polls, and chair vote ayes, well, and I think Ms. Strange is gone. So motion carries for all. That should be it, and I think we enter reports.
Before we do reports, can I say something? Could we be, Nicole, or, no, it's not Nicole, who's timiness, Don, your timiness? Could we have it so that when we do our reports, that we have a time limit to each council member to have three minutes? And if we do need a little more time, that we would give it, but for us to condense our reports?
I second that. Second?
No, I mean, if, I mean, you can make a motion for that, or we can just change it in policy.
Yeah, I can make a motion that reports now will be timed for the three minutes, and it can be extended if there's a majority that accepts the extension.
There you go.
That seemed a little redundant to me. You're gonna put a three-minute time limit on it, but it can't be extended, so, so why worry about the time limit if you begin with? And why is it that you, you're trying to limit yourself on talking, I don't know? Trying to talk with the public, I don't know. Again, here we go. It seemed like to me we doing, making a lot of motions, a lot of things up here to limit ourselves with interaction with our residents, okay? But there's a motion and a second for, on the floor to limit our reports to three minutes, okay? With the possibility of extending time if needed. Any further discussion? Here in none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair voting nay. Motion passes three to one. All right, Mr. Van Wagner.
Just some important dates. Our workshop next week for June seventeenth is gonna be at three P M. Our budget workshops, we had already preset July eighth and July tenth, and now you guys have added potentially also July fifteenth. We'd like to start those, everybody, at nine A M. because we have a lot of material to go through. So I'm asking if you would consider that?
Nine A M. each one?
If you could stop my time.
For all of them, right? Oops. Nine A M. for all three workshops, okay.
Eight, ten, and fifteen. July eighth, ten?
Yes.
I thought you were trying to change it to ten fifteen. I was like, where did you come up with ten fifteen at?
That would sound real crazy, huh?
It lost me for a second. I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
And the tenth, the same time, nine o'clock?
Please.
I'm good with it. Nine o'clock, three days.
To five o'clock as well on the tenth?
Five to nine.
Yes, no, no, it's nine to five, same.
I was asking for the eighth, the tenth, and you all added the fifteenth as well.
Okay. Edit that one. And nine o'clock on the fifteenth. Wow. Okay. Any, anything else, Mr. Van Wagner?
Yes. Recently, the county has been looking at a project on Hook Street for an apartment complex, and I was encouraged to send a consensus from the council to draft a letter to Lake County opposing the proposed density of sixteen units per acre. Our code is twelve, but they're proposing sixteen, so we're in an awkward position now with the county. And I'm asking for you to allow me to have an opposing letter saying we're not okay with those units.
Is, is that, is that project coming on the live local?
It's not, but there, there's conversation if we don't do, it's just going back and forth.
Well, well, the reason I ask that, because if they decide to go live local with that project, they, they can automatically go to sixteen, and we can't say anything about it.
Mr. Mayor, Kurt, just let me know, changed it again to nineteen.
Nineteen is the final request for that site, so.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Definitely not nineteen, but I think we saying our code, even on the live local, the highest they can go is sixteen.
No, twelve is ours.
No, well, they can use the highest density rate in the city, which downtown is sixteen. We changed it from twenty-five to sixteen to try to.
In the downtown, we did, that's right.
Yeah, but they, like I say, according to the code, they can use the highest density in the city.
But they're not doing the live local.
Well, then let's stick with twelve.
That's what I was getting at. Twelve would be our recommendation.
That's what we're asking.
And that's all I'm saying. I was just trying to verify they not on the live local because if they go live local, nothing we can do.
No, they're not.
Okay.
At the moment, they're not, but people are breathing that out in conversations also.
I will, I am.
What's the total density? What's the total, total number?
Kurt?
It's right around three hundred. I don't have the exact number.
At nineteen, it's around three hundred?
Right, correct, yes.
On Hook Street.
I'm sorry?
On Hook.
On Hook Street, right.
And where?
Add some more to Hook Street.
Where? This is right, just south of the Ford dealership.
Okay, now, let me ask this question. I know I have been hesitating by asking this because I don't want to bring it up and jinx ourselves. But there's also approval for no more apartments right down on the corner of Hook and Escalibur. Where is, where is that project?
Yes.
Where is that project? Because it's been over the two years or whatever.
They haven't been around.
But I know they got the extension because of COVID and all that.
Right, right. They have not approached us yet. I know which one you're referring to. I don't remember the name of it right offhand, but.
Schofield, Schofords, whatever the name is.
Skorman.
Skorman, yes, yeah, Skorman, and that, that project's still alive.
They have not come knocking yet.
See, because I've been hesitating saying anything in case they hear me in the increase because I know they asked for an extension. It was a, it was a sunset on that.
Yeah, and I believe they also used a state of emergency, which extended it up to four years.
So I have some concerns. We got the all apartments there on the corner of Florida Avenue and Hook. You got that one already been approved. Now you're talking about another one down the road. And I just, I'm sorry, I, I, they want to do twelve or so according to my, I'm, I'm sticking with twelve myself.
We can always do a moratorium. I said, we can always do a moratorium.
Well, the moratorium, the moratorium is only temporary. You can't put a moratorium.
You can do it every six months.
You're gonna have to deal with it sooner or later.
And the fact that this one's in the county. It's not in the city yet either.
It's in the county. But see, and that's other.
This one, yeah.
And that's the other thing. Even if we sit here and say, no, twelve, they can go to the county and do what, and they, their density is high in the county.
That's what they're attempting to do now, yes.
Well, I'll force them to go to county anyway, because I just, you know.
So do I have a consensus, Mr. Mayor, to have an opposition letter to this project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Also, Lake One Hundred, Dan has a real quick comment he wants to bring to you.
Yeah, so Lake One Hundred is putting together a city-county service delivery efficiency and equitable cost allocation study. And what they're doing is they're getting, they're working with all the cities and the county. They're hiring Dr. Levy, Dr. Richard Levy, to, to champion this study. And they're gonna look at all the different services provided by the city and county, primarily the ones that we share taxes on, so police, fire, libraries, things like that, that, that we pay taxes in the city, and the county pay taxes, and we're, we're using the same service. So the county has agreed to pay for half of it, and they're asking for the cities to collectively pay for the other half. In talking with the other city managers at the city managers' meeting last week, all of them that were there have agreed to participate in the study, and all but one have agreed to fund it, and they've all funded at different levels. Some of them are offering twenty-five hundred, some are offering fifteen thousand. So it's all different. When the Lake County, or the League of, I'm sorry, the Lake One Hundred approached us, and I, I asked them what they're looking for us, they said probably somewhere between twenty-five hundred and five thousand if we can commit to that. So again, just as, as in the last thing, just looking for a consensus to see if A, the city of Claremont wants to participate in the study, and B, if you're comfortable funding up to five thousand dollars of the study.
Okay, yeah. So are you looking for consensus?
I'm looking for consensus on that.
Yes.
Um, I'm fine with it. I mean, I'm not sure why we want to subsidize the county, but, okay.
Well, well, we're not so much, I don't think we so much subsidize the county as we, we trying, each city trying to take some responsibility that this, so the county paying half of it.
No, that's not what I'm talking about, Mr. Mayor. I'm just talking about where they're trying to get to.
Well, and I think that's.
The outcome of what this is gonna be is city subsidizing the county.
Right, and that's what they want, and I think that's the whole purpose behind the, the study and everything, because they trying to accuse us of all this and to do the study that way we find out exactly what's going on here. So I am, I'm in support of it, okay?
So we have consensus on both participation and funding up to five dollars?
Five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Lastly, just some events. June fourteenth, there's a wine stroll from six-thirty to nine P M. June fifteenth is the Colesumner Waterfront Park, seven A M. to two P M. June fifteenth is brews and barbecue from twelve to four. And then June twenty-first is June thirteenth at Waterfront Park from seven to, three to seven P M. And that ends my report.
Okay, Mr. Van Wagner. Either you or, I'm not sure which one I need to ask about this. But there was a question about appealing an agenda items. Is that?
I, I was gonna discuss that in my report.
Okay, you got, you got that, okay? All right, hold on. Let me add, say this to you, Mr. Van Wagner, traffic on Lakeshore, can we get with the P, P D? And have them go ahead and set up a study out of there and see if we can, about what we can do by, that one other question to see about reducing the speed limit. I don't know if we can get down to fifteen miles an hour, but twenty-five is usually.
Well, hold on, that's not, that's Lake County, isn't it? Where he was talking. Well, hold on, that's not Lake, that's Lake County, isn't it, where he was talking about?
He was talking on our part, I thought.
He's talking in our section.
Yeah.
Cause once you go past Hooks, where does it turn?
No, up to Anderson Hill, not Anderson Hill, but, uh, Brogdon.
Right.
Is it at Brogdon where it changes?
Chief Gracy, to his credit, did go meet that gentleman after he left, yes, sir, but I'll talk to him about doing a study on there also.
Okay, the other, other question, I guess, I need to talk to you about before you go into further is playgrounds. Okay, it was a question about our playground, I thought we were doing a fantastic job. I know we've been updating our equipment on a regular basis and everything, but can you get with Mr. Foreman, uh, Parks and Rec and everything to make sure our, our playgrounds, this equipment and everything is up, up to adequate?
He was looking for shade, right? He was saying there was no, there was no covering.
Well, you know, hey, you in Flor- well, I hate to sound so bad, but hey. I'm sorry, I grew up in Florida, I didn't have no shade, I mean, we went out and played and this is Florida, you know, everybody wanna move to Florida, but they want shade for everything, you know, and this, this is.
That's cause they're cutting all the trees down, so now the temperature's going up.
Yeah, but there's, there are parks, so like Chestnut Street has a park that is completely covered in trees. There's another one over here next to, um, the Elks Club that's completely covered in trees, the one, I mean, there's one, there's two on Mini Haha that are both completely tree covered, so, um, but, so for it to come back to council, though, like I said, it was something that I learned that paradise is not ours. Um, and that we've had Mr. Van Wagner supplying that as a, as a benefit to the community for us. And, um, I, you know, he hasn't asked for this, this is me, um, you know, I'd like to see if there's something that we could do to help bring that up, because people love it, and if it's, you know, it's not up to him to pay for the community to have that. So I appreciate what he's done, but I think this council could probably help him to revamp some of that, um, equipment. And, um, I mean, I would support that.
Well, we, we, like I say, in Parks and Rec, I know we got a budget there in Parks and Recs that, that goes around and we try to revamp our equipment and all we have to do is let the people know, uh, in the past anyway, they've been very good about going out and getting equipment updated with, you know.
Right, but it's not, it's not our equipment, it's his, he's, he's providing this park, so, and I didn't know that it was not a city park either. I learned that.
But, well, I'm concerned with our parks anyway, you know, I know we just replaced everything and, and, and you mentioned Chestnut Park, we just replaced a whole lot of equipment over there a couple of years ago, uh, uh, McKinney Park, we replaced everything out there. And Hancock, we did a lot of work there, Park Pals, we doing, I mean, so we try to do this stuff on a regular basis and to hear that we have parks out there in, in bad shape, it bothers me, okay? And I know we're working with the Kiwanis, um, they trying to make them some, uh, got a couple of parks there, like I think it's mostly down on Felton Park, they trying to change all the equipment, so even, uh, challenge, uh, even challenged individuals can be able to utilize the parks as well, so we doing all these kinda things to try to make it, uh, user-friendly, so.
I, I think I heard her say that there wasn't a lot for preschool age.
Right.
And I think that was her biggest concern.
Yes.
And that would just, if that's something you all want me to look at, I certainly can.
Yes, uh, well, I, one of the parks I went into pretty much go to, seemed like we have, you have equipment for all ages there so far, so, but.
Well, for, for whatever reason, they're, they, they won't let pre-K kids climb thirty feet anymore and just take the cha- their chances, it's not the world I grew up in, I'll tell you that.
So I, I believe we have a workshop coming up that Allison had asked for Parks and Rec, so that would be a great fit for that.
Yeah, but any, any. Yeah, so if you can just give a part, you know, let, let's get a survey on all our parks and make sure we, we in pretty good shape, pretty much. Uh, I guess I'm gonna ask this one to Kirk while, while we here and everything and before I go into further consensus there. Ordinance, uh, there was a lot of discussion about, uh, landscaping requirements and everything. We have all, in our ordinance, we have different requirement for landscaping and all that, already written in our ordinance, right? Which we already trying to change, I know last council meeting we postponed, land, new landscaping ordinance.
Yes, we have standards, yes.
Okay, see, well, I just wanna make sure we verify that because the comment was the fact that we need to put these kinda things in, but the, our ordinance already called for certain requirement for landscaping and trees and everything. There've been a lot of concern lately about trees being cut down.
Yeah.
But our ordinance called, if you're cutting down X number of trees, you gotta replant X number of trees.
That's right.
So, okay, I just wanna verify, uh, cause that one of the comments, I'm just trying to make sure I get the most of the questions right here. And the other one... The consent agenda approval, I guess, Mr., I think we finally answered that, I'm not sure, did we finally get a real answer for that? Who approved the consent agenda and why, who directs and decide who put them all on there, so.
I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay.
Ultimately, I res- I'm responsible for anything on the agenda, but I am looking at staff's recommendation and precedent. So after tonight, I've clearly heard, even though it's been four other times, not to put a plat for a Pulte or anything like that. So again, I can change old precedent with new, that's no problem. So I worked that through with the staff and I'm, I'm the ultimate decision maker, so I'll take any of the responsibility. You know, I'm not gonna shuck that, but I do communicate with staff and ask for their input on all those things.
Okay, well, I just, I'm sorry, I'm just going through my list and trying to make, while you're trying to hit things I think you're responsible for and everything, so. Uh, other things, um, I can answer a couple of other things here that, that I made note of later in my report, I guess. Uh, Mr. Wa.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, briefly given the time restrictions, I'll say that the Florida Legislature has passed a law that I think as of July first will preempt some of your laws. Um, in other words, uh, you have a restriction on, um, the type of engine that a boat can use on some of your lakes. It's now preempted and I will be working on a repeal of your ordinance for your consideration after July first. Um, addressing some of the questions that came up, um, I don't know if Ms., well, I know Ms. Hoysington watches the meeting, so I'll, I'll, I'll address it. Um, appeal, so this language is standard language, uh, that we, we put on the agenda and appeals can take different forms. Now, I encourage anyone listening who's thinking about an appeal, please get your own legal counsel. You do not rely on what I'm telling you, uh, for the basis of an appeal, but, uh, they can take two different forms. One is if you have a quasi judicial decision, like a rezoning or something like that, uh, that would, you've got thirty days usually to appeal that. Uh, we've handled some of those appeals even since I've been the city attorney. And if you do wanna do that, normally when you do that appeal, you need to generate a transcript somehow, give the judge a reason, some kind of evidentiary basis to justify your appeal. And that's why it says here that you don't, you can't necessarily rely on the city to make that record for you. You may need to transcribe it yourself, get a court reporter, something like that. And so sometimes you'll see that, you'll see a court reporter at some of our meetings if someone's worried and thinks they might need to appeal that. There's another method, um, there are some laws that the city passes that could be challenged by what's called a declaratory judgment action. And, uh, they have four years to bring that kind of, uh, lawsuit, so, um, I think that's it. Also, there was a concern raised about, I think, solicitation, I think Ms. Hoysington brought that up as well.
Right.
And we have laws on the books in Claremont that address solicitation, it's in chapter ten of, uh, the city code. And, uh, generally speaking, these, you know, there's permits required, there's all kinds of, in my review of it, it looks constitutional. There's some cities that have unconstitutional solicitation, I mean, really, um, that are just old, they've never been challenged, but when you have reasonable restrictions, it's not a First Amendment violation, uh, so that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank, I'm glad you answered that, cause that one question I had for you, the solicitation on mediums, I guess, I guess, as well it was. All right, thank you, uh, and she's gone, Ms. Strange is gone, so, uh, Councilmember Howard.
No report.
Councilmember Myers.
Good evening, I had the pleasure of attending, um, Thrive Claremont's pop-up, summer pop-up. Thrive Claremont is an organization that helps thirteen to eighteen-year-olds, um, with career choices, college readiness, and exposes them to recreational activities. And what they did Tuesday, they had like C S I in one room, they had SWAT team in another room, they had, um, the E R. in another room, they were, one room they had where they could, they could learn how to play chess and how to, um, paint with watercolors. And what really touched me was to see that these teams were excited, they were, they were engaged, they were happy, they were enjoying. And so after a certain amount of time, they would switch rooms. And I asked the founder, um, Sherry, how can we help? And she said that what her organization needs is a regular meeting place. Um, and she also said that the city had given her grants in the past. So I wanted to bring to council, since we have budget coming up, is there some way that we could, um, help them with finding a regular meeting space and giving them grants? Um, I do believe that we need to support our teens, especially those who want to do something positive. Um, it benefits our community and, um, they are here in Claremont. And that ends my report.
Thank you, um, Strive is a great organization, especially for our kids and, uh, of course, I, I, I try to support them and I, I think we need to go back and look at, uh, we used to have certain grant programs somewhat and everything to help them, but, uh, uh, different organization, but also I, I've been curious, I mentioned somebody before about, I would like to see our youth council brand brought back. We used to have a youth council here for the city as well, okay?
Oh, wow.
And everything, so we need to maybe look at doing that and, uh, getting them back and getting them involved, cause there's a lot of young folks out there these days that's trying to get involved with our local government, so.
Okay.
So give that some consideration as well. Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the, the high-density housing project that we were talking about, where we'd go back to Lake County. If, if in the event that it went back to Lake County, does Claremont's parking restrictions cover that or we don't have power on that?
Kurt? Actually, if, if, if we turn it down to go back to county, they had, they has all the right to go by all their ordinance and, and.
Really?
Deal holds and everything, that's why I say sometime we, 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 we wanna try to do things and, and we mess ourselves up. Like I said, the one project we approved tonight, when it came to the city, we absolutely refused it because we thought it was too intense, okay? But they just say, okay, we'll go back to county, county approved, and they put even more.
So we have no, once it is county, we can't control anything, you know?
No.
It's almost like it's a little island inside Claremont.
And one of the things we, I worked on, we worked, the council before, worked on with the county was the fact that, and we had, I thought we had a pretty good relationship, working relationship up until the last few months, uh, was the fact that when they come to the county and ask for a project in Claremont, even though it's in the county down here and it's, we need to provide service, give us opportunity, send it to us and give us the opportunity to say yea and nay on it before they vote on it or take any action. That was starting to work, but somehow it disappeared on us, you know, and everything, so. Uh, and that's why, as Mr. Howard said, uh, earlier, we really need to go back to the table and get the, get the agreement, J, uh, joint agreement, J P As and, and everything in, in, in place and everything, so, so, um.
And then the last thing is, we were talking about the code enforcement board, if we can get somehow, you know, do some advertisement for that and I know we're advertising in the four publications now on a monthly basis.
Correct.
So maybe we could throw that in there, and I know you're gonna get the volunteers, you get the people.
I, I, I just wanna let you know something, though, some, something people don't always know about the statute is it requires, this is both a pro and a con, by the way, I'm not, but the statute requires that we try and make best efforts to find different kinds of.
Of people.
People, like an architect and this and that, now, it's not a requirement, some towns don't have enough, you know, but just a thought.
I mean, if you don't have anybody, I think that, you know, any, any breathing body will work, right?
That's essentially correct.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, all right, thank you, now for my report, first of all, let me say this, uh, Mr., Mr. Peterson. Mr. Wa. I've been, I, I wanna let the, can you let them know, uh, the policy on off-duty officers? I don't think you all, I don't know if y'all received the emails that I've been receiving about off-duty office concern with them getting hurt if they're performing off-duty tasks and who's responsible for their, for their, uh, compensation if they get hurt, so.
So there, there's two different aspects to that, one is a pension potential and one is a workman's comp potential, so, worker's comp potential. So, uh, with the pension, we have a pension policy for police officers that regardless of whether they're on duty or off duty, whether they are injured, falling off a ladder at home, uh, what they get in terms of medical benefit or, or disability benefit, um, depends on how long they've served. And so, for example, if they've been with us ten years or longer, it's, it's a full benefit, uh, the benefit is vested and so they get that. Um, if it's less than ten years, then it's prorated based on the time of service, I think down to five. I, I, I'm not sure, actually, I, I'm not sure what happens if it's before five, but I know from five to ten, it's prorated. And then there's the worker's comp issue, which is sometimes you have, uh, law enforcement officers doing things that, uh, like be, serving as a crossing guard or, or, I don't know if that's what they call it, but someone assisting students getting from parking lot across the street, security at a nightclub or something like that. And if they are injured in the line of duty, then they are entitled to worker's comp. If it's not in the line of duty, then they're not entitled to worker's comp. But what determine, the, the line between in the line of duty and not in the line of duty is what we call in the legal profession a fact-based question, I can't tell you all the scenarios that would necessarily qualify ahead of time. Uh, but what I can say is the worker's comp policy will determine that. And as you know, it's the job of an insurance policy to deny claims and not pay them, um, that's half of a joke, but at any rate, I, that means I can't give you, I can't let you know for sure, but I will say that the way the law has evolved over the years is when there's a Dow, it usually ends up being in the line of duty.
Okay, and I just wanted you all to hear that because the, um, I have a gentleman out there that's been bugging us for about three, four weeks about that incident, so he finally got the answer to me, so if you hear about it, uh, I guess they're concerned about directing traffic and controlling the traffic like on Sundays at church, after church and everything. Uh, another issue out there is the loud music at Waterfront Park, you wanna elaborate on that one?
Yeah, I, I mean, so here in the city, you do have a noise ordinance, okay? So if someone violates a noise ordinance, that's typically a matter for code, possibly law enforcement. And, you know, it, it depends on decibel readings, so you have an objective standard, which is good from a constitutional perspective. Uh, not all cities have that. But when the city itself violates its noise ordinance, it's exempt under your noise ordinance. So too are events that are permitted and approved through, for example, your Parks and Rec department. So if something exceeds, say, sixty-five decibels beyond a time, you know, that you'd expect the noise ordinance to prohibit it, it's exempt under the noise ordinance because we've approved it. Now, there are remedies to that, you can change your noise ordinance, you can reduce the exemptions, you can set standards for city events that say, we're not gonna do a permit for something beyond this time of day. So there's remedies if you wanna change that, but, um, that's the situation. I don't know if that answers your question, Mayor.
Well, yeah, well, it's just that that's another one of them letters we've been inundated with in the last few weeks with, uh, concern about, um, noise at Waterfront Park and so we, we need to maybe bring that and look at it again sometime soon. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Florida League of City Luncheon this Friday at twelve o'clock, uh, I'm in Fruitland Park, um, anyone, I'm not sure if you're going, Mr. Peterson, but, uh, Fruitland Park, welcome to join, twelve o'clock Friday. Uh, Jerk Festival this past weekend was a huge success again and, uh, the city, uh, they thanked the city for, for helping support that as well. There was a lot of people down, it was hot, but it was a lot of people down, down there at the Jerk Festival as well. Mayor's Luncheon, I thank everyone for came, coming out, uh, last week and joining me for, for the luncheon, um, my mayor's lunch last week, so it was another big success as well. Um, Mr. Van Wagner, where are we with the city sitter contract with the chamber, have we got that worked out yet?
Ye- yes, Mayor, that's been signed and done.
Okay, signed and done, when is it taking effect?
Do you know the date, I think it's July.
Huh?
Do you know the date for the chamber?
Is it July?
I think it was July. I don't see Col- Mr. Colby here.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, but, uh, anyway, I can, well, I can go and ask for a copy of that and see exactly what, what turns worse, because, okay. All righty, Jerk Festival. Let me address, it was a question about the exit on Hills, Anderson Hill Street coming from, uh, Planet Fitness. Kirk, if I'm not mistaken, when they put that in, they say they would never make an exit there because people concerned, uh, about traffic and everything on that road, that's why it's not there. And of course, when I go down there as well, I, I go through there and I say, wow, it would really be a big help if we can have that exit instead of everybody having to come out and go back to twenty-seven and make all these U-turns and everything. There was a condition in, in the, in the P U D. or whatever it is. Anyway, Mr. Wa, can we take a look at that and see if we can go back and maybe, maybe see if we can, maybe change, cause the exit is there, it, it's there, it's just closed off.
Happy to do so.
Okay, all right, uh, I, I guess. Okay, all right. Uh, I, I guess the gentleman asked that question, he's gone, I guess, I'm sorry. Uh, trees being trimmed. And I, I'm assuming what she referring to is where the, where the, uh, utility company, Duke and all of them, they pay the utility, uh, these, uh, tree trimming companies to come out along the roads and they trim up all our trees, or, and they, they the most godly-looking things, and like in my neighborhood, they can went through where the lines run, they cut the big B out, so, uh, trees sitting up there wide open like this here, you know, and I, I haven't seen what she said on Twelve Street. But we need to let them know, that's, that's basically what it is, and it's out of our control. We have nothing to do with it, okay? Uh, it's all done through, uh, Duke Energy, or whoever, whoever, uh, have the utility lines there. And even though they ugly and lead the trees looking all ugly, and I think most susceptible is the damage and everything, it's been working. Because the whole idea is behind it is to keep power on, okay? So during the hurricanes and everything, uh, we haven't been having as much power outage in some of the communities and neighborhoods because of them breaking and falling on them, so it's somewhat working, so. That, that was the whole idea behind that, and yes, it is ugly, and I agree. Last, I think the last question, well, the thing about the meeting times, um, that can be addressed, um, uh, council meeting times, I guess we can, we, I think they talked about maybe readdressing that again at a later date, Ms. Ford, okay? Bars in downtown. I find it strange that this gentleman coming here tonight, because I just had this conversation with somebody the other day about bars in downtown area, because I happened to be downtown one day last week, and I think I counted like almost fifteen drinking establishments. In our little, yeah, yes, and I'm like, I, it caught me by surprise, so I, I sit there and I, I, hey, they doing good business, but you got Roasty Spirit, and then of course you got Black Bear right there next to it, it offer beer. You would just have a new, new, uh, sports bar built right behind, uh, uh, what's the name? The Pizza Place. Of course, uh, Corellis, yeah, behind Corellis. And then you got Pizza Place that, that actually sell alcohol. You got Mother, the wine shop up the road. Then you come right down, Suds just moved there, you know, right on there. You got one across the street in, in, um, West Market. You know, and of course, then you go down, you got, you got, uh, C B C, you got Sun Creek, you know. I mean, I like, wow, I was just ta- taken by surprise when I started walking through the other day and looking like, wow, why we have so many bars in the downtown area and everything? So maybe we wanna take a consideration, take a look at, hey, uh, do we wanna put a limit or, or more on some of the alcohol establishments that we, we are allowing in here and everything? And they all thriving, they doing great, but in such a small area, we, I mean, just go back and go, just go through and look, look at, at, at all the alcohol, uh, serving establishment we have, and of course, you go down to West Market or where it used to be West Market, I think you gotta be a truck or something down in that area as well, see, so. So, uh, so let's, let's take a look at that maybe, I don't know, maybe the council maybe wanna take consideration in saying, hey, what do we wanna do about it? Do we wanna put a limit on, on this stuff, or what, but, I don't know. Uh, now, I'm not sharing, what I, what I wanna ask you, Mr. Van Wagner, if you could look into, he's saying people are drinking at seven o'clock in the morning. I didn't think business was even open at seven o'clock in the morning. See? So, so can we look at the hours and, and, and all this, and maybe come back to us and, and give us some rec, you come and give us some recommendations for hours and everything, especially on Sundays and things like this, okay? But it is, it is a lot of, uh, that's, I find it strange, because he come in and say this, and when I, I, I just noticed this last week, because I happened to be walking through the downtown area, took a walk through last week, and I'm like, wow, I didn't realize we had so many. And I haven't even been in the new sports bar there, they just opened out behind Corellis and everything. So I haven't even been in there yet, so. But anyway, that's all I have, uh, anyone else has, have anything? If not, meeting adjourned.